Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to your meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Will everyone please rise with the pleasure of allegiance and the invocation?
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and every being justice and
Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful that you allow us to come together today to do the work of this county. But first and foremost, I want to thank you for touching us with your loving hands to awaken us to see another on your beautiful days. Father, we ask you to be with us today as we make decisions to make this county the best it possibly can be. If we disagree, let us be on one accord that at the end of this meeting, we're doing the best we possibly can for each and every person in this county. Father, we ask you to put your loving hands of protection around those who put their lives on the line for us each and every day, our first responders, whether they are military uniforms, our police, our firefighters, anyone that's a first responder. We ask you to, at the end of their duty, to take them back to their homes and find everything safe and sound. When our work is done here today, we ask you to take us back to our homes and find all safe and sound. These are all blessings, we ask you in righteous and holy name. Before we get started, I'd like to read into the record a memo from Commissioner Stacy White. Says, "I will not be at the Wednesday, February 5th Board of County Commission meeting due to a previous scheduled commitment." Please read the reason of my absence into the record. We have this morning two proclamations and the first one will be given by Commissioner
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And every year, I'm always so happy to do this proclamation because it's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. And if you notice the little red dress I have pinned on my jacket today, it's a symbol of Go Red for Women, which is a women's group that really advocates for women to become more aware of heart disease and actually heart attacks and stroke. And they're really a leading cause of death among women, far more than cancer. So it's always a pleasure to present this. And the annual recognition of American Heart Month began in 1963 to encourage Americans to join the battle against heart disease, which is the leading cause of death for both men and women in the United States. Hospitals and health systems around the country celebrate American Heart Month by helping to raise awareness in their communities about heart disease. Volunteers, ambassadors, staff wear red throughout the month. They hold free community events featuring screenings and heart health awareness activities. It's a great time for people to commit to a healthy lifestyle, make small changes that can lead to a lifetime of heart health. And I'd like to call up the representatives from the American Heart Association. We have Kristen Lewis, Amanda Palumbo, and Kelly Reedy from the American Heart Association. Which one are we missing? Kelly Reedy, okay, very good. A presidential proclamation pays tribute each year to researchers, physicians, public health professionals, and volunteers for their tireless efforts in preventing, treating, and researching heart disease. Local county and city governments also issue proclamations declaring February as American Heart Month and include National Wear Red Day in the declarations. National Wear Red Day is really fun day and it's celebrated during Heart Month. It's on the first Friday of every month, so it's going to be this Friday. Very good. It's a perfect chance to wear red to further promote awareness about heart disease. And in Tampa Bay, people will see dozens of iconic buildings and landmarks being lit up red in support. Many local events take place on this day to further raise awareness. Local businesses use it as an opportunity among their employees to hold health screenings, offer heart-healthy lunches, take a group walk around the grounds, and offer group exercise classes and much more. So I am excited to present this proclamation to both of you. And it says, "Whereas 92 million Americans are living with some form of cardiovascular disease or the after effects of stroke. Whereas cardiovascular diseases are the nation's leading cause of death and approximately 844,000 people in the United States die each year from heart disease, stroke, and other cardiovascular illnesses. Whereas in Hillsborough County, more than 406,000 people have been diagnosed with high blood pressure, more than 552,000 have been diagnosed with high cholesterol, and more than 133,000 have been diagnosed with diabetes. Whereas about 80% of cardiovascular diseases may be prevented through everyday heart-healthy living, including physical activity, good nutrition, eliminating smoking, which is very important, and maintaining a healthy weight. Whereas it is essential to recognize the symptoms of cardiovascular disease such as severe chest discomfort, pain in one or both arms, and shortness of breath. Whereas the American Heart Association encourages residents to call 911 if symptoms occur. Seek training in CPR, promote comprehensive automated external defibrillator programs in their communities. The American Heart Association is celebrating February 2020 as American Heart Month and February 7th to 2020 as Wear Red Day to promote awareness about the warning signs of a heart attack or stroke. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare February 2020 as American Heart Month and February 7th, 2020 as Wear Red Day in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to join the American Heart Association in fighting cardiovascular disease by identifying symptoms, taking preventive measures that will increase survival rates and save thousands of lives each year." So it's so exciting. You want? And would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Sure. We'll hold it and then we'll take a picture.
Okay. So my name is Amanda Palumbo. I'm the executive director for the American Heart Association here in Tampa Bay. And I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Merman and to the county commissioners for declaring this Heart Month. As you shared, this Heart Month started almost 60 years ago with many different health institutions coming together and taking a stand against what was then and is still now the nation's number-one killer for both men and women. And so we are honored to wear our red today and throughout this month. And this Friday, we will be having a lot of activities going on in Hillsborough County, starting early morning with a 7:30 a.m. walk on Bay Shore that the public is welcome to join us for, and ending the day with a Galentine's Day event in High Park Village. So we're looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Merman. I appreciate it.
Some of you may or may not know that I'm a three-time cancer survivor. It kind of runs in my family. My wife's a two-time cancer survivor. Our daughter's a five-time cancer survivor. As a matter of fact, she's going through treatment right now at Moffitt Cancer Center. It was Moffitt Cancer Center some years ago that found out that through a genetic test, the gene we have in our family is pretty strong. So every one in our family, my sons, my daughter, and my grandchildren must get tested on a frequent basis for cancer. But we beat it. Even though my daughter's happened to go through that right now, five times, she goes to work every day as a schoolteacher. So it's because of Moffitt and the work that they do and the testing and all the biotechnology that they come up with has saved lives. If you've never been to Moffitt, you need to go. It's unbelievable the number of people that they treat on a daily basis from all over this world. Regardless of what you may hear about going out there now, it's the work that they do that's important. So today, we're going to recognize Moffitt Cancer Center Business of Biotech Day. So Dr. Cox and who else you have with you? I didn't get their names.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, sir. Good to see you. So I'm going to read this proclamation concerning Moffitt's Biotech Day. It says, "Whereas biotechnology is battle to Florida's diversified economy and Moffitt Cancer Center's research and innovations are fueling this industry. And whereas since 2004, research at Moffitt Cancer Center has resulted in more than 135 United States patents, 135, along with hundreds of commercial license agreements and the creation of 11 active biotech startup companies. And whereas Moffitt Cancer Center will host the 14th Annual Business of Biotech Conference with the theme "Setting the Pace in the Cancer Race" at Moffitt Cancer Center in Tampa on February 7th, 2020. And whereas the Business of Biotech Conference will showcase medical innovation and research throughout the Tampa Bay region, bringing together biomedical companies, startups, service providers, entrepreneurs, and investors for networking and partnership discussions. And whereas this year's conference features breakout sessions on digital health, startup funding in the biotech space, and other topics and tours. And whereas Dr. Alice Jacobs, a physician, entrepreneur, inventor, and investor, will be interviewed by retired broadcast television anchor and journalist Charles Gibson. And whereas one of the largest events of its kind in Florida, Moffitt Cancer Center's Business of Biotech Conference is always free of charge and open to all with an interest in science and innovation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, as hillsborough, declare February 7th, 2020 at Moffitt Cancer Center's Business of Biotech Day in Hillsborough County and recognize this Moffitt Cancer Center's Business of Biotech event for its importance in promoting job creation and strengthening the overall economy well-being of this community. Excuse this fifth day of February 2020 and signed by the several members of the Board of County Commissioners. Dr. Cox?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Miller, the Board of County Commissioners. This isn't a new thing for me to stand up here and receive this proclamation, but it's new in the sense that now I have a personal story to share about the impact of Moffitt. On December 16th, 2019, I found out that my father was diagnosed with stage IV prostate cancer. And for me, it kind of rocked my world. Even as a scientist who works at a cancer center, who sees these things every day, it hit home. When I went down there, February 12th, when I went down there, we went to my dad's appointment at Memorial Regional Hospital. And what gave me so much hope was that when I entered an elevator, there was a big M that was in the elevator. And that M was a Moffitt M, our Moffitt logo. Existence and just a reminiscence of the partnerships that we make to not only make the lives of the citizens of Tampa Bay better, but also the citizens of everywhere that we can touch. With the Moffitt impact and the Moffitt training that our physicians have, that our researchers have, we make an impact beyond just the city of Tampa Bay. But we wouldn't be able to do that without, of course, our talented faculty, our talented physicians, but also partnership. Partnership from the county, partnership with our collaborators, and partnership from you, the citizens of Tampa Bay. So with that in mind, I invite you all to join us, February 7th, at our annual Business of Biotech, which has now become the largest biotech conference in the state of Florida. We are expecting over 500 individuals and we have a wonderful lineup of sessions. We have a wonderful keynote speaker driven to talk to you all about the impact that we have on the cancer field, the impact we have on the cancer race in finding a solution. So I invite you once again to join us on February 7th, 2020, this Friday, at Business of Biotech. Thank you all so much for your support, county commissioners. Thank you all so much for your belief and confidence in Moffitt. And please come check us out.
Yes, Commissioner, we just have a couple of changes. A-23 has been deferred to February 19th. That was to award agreements for ongoing and as-needed repair and maintenance of intersection traffic control systems. E-9 is a revision, Scribner's Error. That's to schedule and advertise a public hearing for February 19th, 2020. It was listed as 2019 in the agenda, and that pertains to the pet retail sales. Nothing's been removed from consent. We have a handful of time certens. Two public hearings starting at 10:00 a.m. D-1 is a public hearing to accept comments on the Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. D-2 is a public hearing to consider enactment of an ordinance authorizing a sterile needle and syringe exchange program. 10:15 is F-1, Commissioner Merman's item, a resolution supporting passage of Senate Bill 810, which seeks to revise the age limits for the purchase, sale, and possession of tobacco products to persons under 21 years of age. 10:30, E-1, special appearance by Martine Collier, Executive Director, Arts Council, to present her quarterly activity report. 10:45, B-1 is to approve an initial assessment resolution to create an impact of the assessment unit under Chapter 106 of the Hillsborough County Code and set a public hearing for March 4th. 11:00 a.m. is F-2, Commissioner Overman's item, that's to receive a presentation from USF on the 2020 regional competitiveness report. 11:15, B-2 is the County Audit Report 374, Economic Development Local Incentive Agreement Monitoring. And 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
I have a motion, Michael, Mr. Merman. Second, Michael, Mr. Overman, to approve the moves, to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute time period in the morning immediately following agendas, changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comment at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking of scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking of non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes are allowed for each speaker. There's a timer on the desk there. If you go to the aisle mode, there's a timer there. You have three minutes. When the light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds, and the red one means your time is up. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I was looking through, we're going to be talking about public comment, but we're also going to be, a lot of the people are coming to talk about A-9. And I need to make reference to A-9 in the sense that there is an error in the item. It's listing 219.
That's been taken care of.
2019, okay. It's...
You just voted on that as a revision.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Our first speaker is Cynthia Khan, followed by Karen Akers Star.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Khan. I'm here to address the retail pet sale ordinance. I'll be using my three minutes to introduce an undercover video to be shown by the next person. The video was taken at the puppy mill Simmler's in Missouri in 2015. All About Puppies of Hillsborough County has purchased puppies from Simmler's, and we will be handing you the purchase documents as proof, also dated 2015. Make no mistake, there were puppies sold here in Hillsborough, born in this puppy mill. The video will be shown without comment so that you can hear the owner, the manager, and the dogs. At the time of the video, there were 140 dogs on the property. As you watch, things to note. This is Missouri. The cages and dogs are exposed to the elements as you see year-round, summer and winter. The average temperature in Missouri in the winter is 19 degrees. You will see dogs continually spinning in their cages. This is only one indication of the stress of constant confinement for these animals. Their stress also comes from lack of human interaction and socialization. They are untouched, un-groomed, with nails untrimmed, which ultimately causes pain and infection. All About Puppies stated they visit their suppliers. If that's true, they must be aware of and condone these conditions. One thing you will notice, there is no resemblance to the unnamed fantasy facility shown to you previously at the last commission meeting. If you remember, that's the one with the heated floors, the shiny tiles, those pretty pictures with no USDA number, no address, and no dogs in it. Today, five years later, the dogs you will see in this video are still in the same cages or they're dead. For them, there is no other way out. All About Puppies cannot deny this mill is a source for them. After the video, you will be handed their purchase documents. This is an industry based on greed. The formula is, the cheaper my product, the more money for me. To make a cheap product, in this case, a live puppy, the least amount of care must be invested in it for the biggest profit. The lack of care is on full display in this video. So we ask you to please ban the retail sale of puppies here in Hillsborough County. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Karen Akers Star, followed by William Rowland.
My name is Karen Akers Star, and I want to present this video that was just spoken
Do you own the kennel here, or do you just? I know you do beagles, but you don't have any yorkies or shizu or chihuahua. Oh, yes, sir.
That's my general manager. My wife started it back in 1988.
Hi, are you the general manager?
I sure am. I try to make sure we...
Hey there.
Yeah, we're actually trying to get away from these little teacup things.
Really?
Just two pups, that's awful.
That's a more popular...
They're fat. I've been telling them. She's off the long way, dude.
Hey there. Aww.
Oh, I know, I know, here you go.
It's okay, it's okay. All that, yeah, yeah.
I like these little...
The Shawns. He's a tiny, tiny little guy.
Right. We never, for the most part, I just cross them because the pups, I mean, the pups look okay and all, but I'm afraid of them. I've never even heard of a party collar of Yorkies.
I've never heard of that either.
Well, we've got these and I, I, she's like, I think I have, like that. For the most part, we have a buyer buys most probably money to sell our puppies.
Do you do pet stores or do you just go through a broker?
I sell to a pet store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm ready to know when I saw puppies with that, what, the Shawns. Well, we should do the week for anything.
Oh, okay. Anything like that, that's like an unusual breed and that it's, you know, even if it's a big dog, the smaller the better. Oh, you're USDA?
We're USDA.
Now, from what I hear, though, that you don't, if you have an indirect, as they call it, USDA doesn't write it up as long as...
They're not as bad as they used to be. As of right now, if they come into the kennel and they see something that, you know, you need to fix, but you can do it in a couple of days or whatever, she'll tell us, well, I seen this, 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 get that fixed.
Stores like those in Hillsborough County keep these puppy mills in business. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Rowland, Commissioners, I ask you to vote against job-killing regulations that are so clearly not reasonable or necessary because the stores have passed their county inspections. Ending of the grandfather clause under the misleading terms of the stores added numbers to the PRC, which they did not, and now saying it is necessary to close these stores because of the actions of a local breeder who is not even regulated under the same pet store ordinance is unjustified, unfair, and flat-out wrong. As per county inspections, the current stores have met the guidelines, met the standards, and passed your compliance inspections. Most recently, on December 2019, as shown on the projector and passed around, it'll be on the projector here in a second, which approved the store to continue operations. Therefore, in December, after being in business for over 10 years, Puppies Tampa resigned a five-year lease since it was found to be compliant. What makes you think it is right to approve any business for operation and after passing compliance inspections, turn right around and say, "Nope, we take it back and we've decided to close you instead. You had your chance. We proved that we passed those inspections while operating under your strict guidelines. Were things perfect? No, but we did it." This is a clear example of county overreach and you purposefully moving the goal line to prevent success after we have spent months adhering to everything that was asked. This is a local government setting up the small guy, the small business owner for failure instead of promoting reasonable and necessary regulation. I can only hope that every voter out there sees exactly what's going on here and refuses to vote for commissioners who push the small guy out and punish the small businesses after they have busted their butts to pass those inspections and demands. This should be very alarming to all businesses. If you pass an unnecessary ordinance, I would be scared to open any small business in Hillsborough County. If commissioners can do this to one industry for false reasons, then you better bet they can do it to any industry, your industry, your businesses. We passed your inspections, we were granted the permits for next year, obligated ourselves to leases, business commitments, terms, liabilities, employments, employees, jobs, and then you turn around and say, "Actually, we're going to throw that away now. Get out." We're not here to help or reasonably regulate you. We're making sure that you fail and are screwed with a five-year lease that you can't pay. The restrictions you have put in the ordinance that you're planning to pass on the 19th immediately limits us to where we can't buy or sell. It's an immediate setup for failure the next day. It's not even possible to adhere to. You have done this on purpose. As a small business owner in Florida, I am begging and calling out to my state representatives, we need your help. We need you to right the wrongs of the local governments in Florida who are hurting your voters and closing businesses by leading them down a path towards failure even after they pass the inspections and their issued permits. Thank you.
Travis Blackwell. Travis Blackwell, followed by Brianna Casas.
Hello, my name is Travis Blackwell. I reside at 2124 West Brandon Boulevard, and I do not support a pet retail sale ban. All right, thank you so much, y'all.
Thank you. Brianna Casas. Followed by Trevor Blackwell.
Hi, my name is Brianna Casas, and I do not support A-9. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor Blackwell, followed by Ian Julian.
Hello, my name is Trevor Blackwell. I reside at 2124 West Brandon Boulevard, and I do not support a pet retail sale ban.
Thank you. Ian Julian, followed by Cristo Gutierrez.
Hi, I'm Ian Julian. I reside at 2124 West Brandon Boulevard, and I do not support a pet retail sales ban.
Thank you. Cristo Gutierrez, followed by Alexandria Julian.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Cristo Gutierrez. I'm at 13705 North Dale Mabry. A few years ago, I was in need of a dog. I was only 18 at the time, so I, you know, didn't know what to go through. I started at rescues. They believed, they said I couldn't get a dog until I was 25. I tried shelters, I've tried a lot of other things, so in the end, I went online. I was a bit skeptical, but after a while, they sent me so much proof. They sent me pictures of parents, they sent me pictures of their champion bloodline, vet reports, literally everything I could ask for. To this day, that dog is still nonexistent. So I got scammed, even though I asked for everything, every little thing I could ask for, to like have proof of that. They were super kind, and in the end, I ended up, you know, making a bad decision. So I went to a store, got a puppy. She is, hands down, the best thing that's ever happened to me. She's helped me out a lot with my stress, a lot with, I guess, being lonely. So that's the only thing. I'm really proud to have her by my side, and every time I go into stores, I brag about her. And to this day, I get harassed and lectured every single time someone tells me, hey, where'd you get your dog from? Puppy store. I have postcards from me and the breeder back, and it's, they literally say all these things to me, and I get harassed about it. Why? Why is it that I can't make my own decision to get a dog from where I would like to get a dog? What do you, I've tried everything before going to a puppy store, and I know there are a lot of people out there like me who need dogs. What are you going to do if you pass A-9, and there are other people like me? I don't think it's right that you guys, anyone, can assume that the constituents aren't aware of what they're purchasing. We know what we're comfortable with. If we don't want to get from a certain person, we're going to know that we're not going to get from a certain person. That's why there's a free market in the first place, like the shirt says, my puppy, my choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandria Julian, followed by Daniella Coffey.
All right, hello, my name is Alexandria Julian. You guys have met me before. My family owns All About Puppies. This is the second time that I've had to come up here and defend something that they've put on the projector that is outdated and inaccurate. If we're not working with a breeder presently, it's because that breeder did not meet the requirements that we set out for our breeders. And for anyone to say that I am viewing these kennels, and that I support any type of inhumane industry, for lack of better words, is full of it. So with that being said, I'm going to address a few of the false remarks and claims that were made and leveled toward our company and the breeders that we work with. It was said in the last meeting that the USDA regulations allow animals to be treated like livestock. I want to make a point that just because there's a minimum requirement in place doesn't mean that people have to treat their animals a certain way. I also didn't realize that that's what Milk Bones Before Bed, Fetch, and Playtime with Friends was classified as. And let me reiterate that no minimum requirement would mean that there was no requirement at all. So if we would prefer that, okay. I also think that it's a valid question to ask, where are we receiving this information from? Is it solely off of Google searches and organizations that are profiting off of this sob story? Because I can tell you for absolute fact that there is nothing further from the truth than the flawed statement that the animals that our breeders raise are raised like livestock. Breeders do not only adhere to USDA regulations, they have state laws that are in place for every source that our animals come from. She's showing you all of those animal acts at each state level. These requirements go over kennel size, exercise, socialization, veterinary care, euthanasia, and other requirements such as retirement plans. So all of which exceed the USDA regulations. So when you have organizations that claim to be well-versed on these topics, and they leave out crucial information like this, and say things like, there's only six inches added on to the cage from the size of the dog, I'm just kind of wondering, what else are they forgetting to mention in order to pass this biased and agenda-driven ban? During the last meeting, it was said that we already had our two years. I'm going to ask that we reference this later on and answer this question, what are we referring to when we say we had these last two years? Because what we had was two years of compliance. We had two years of providing your citizens with quality animals from responsible breeders, and we had, most importantly, two years of your Pet Resource Center telling us that we were a model store, and that we were a stellar store. So when you say that we've had two years, I want everybody to sit back for a second and make sure that we note that that was two years of us living up to our end of the ordinance that this commission voted on. Thanks.
Thank you. Daniella Coffey, followed by Natalia Sanabria.
Hey, guys, my name is Daniella Coffey. I live in Hillsborough County. In 2017, the USDA took the breeders' USDA inspection reports offline, for the safety of the breeders, given that their personal information is documented on them. During this process, this commission agreed to base our inspections on a trust program with our breeders. Our breeders would provide us with the reports, and we would maintain them in the stores. Although other entities don't trust our breeders, we do. Even so, we went a step further, and have now sourced them from the USDA directly as well. We will continue doing this so in a timely manner to weed out this concern. To be clear, the USDA will not provide these reports to animal rights organizations, and neither will we. We are providing these reports to the purchaser and the regulating body, the people who have a right to them, not the people who wish to use them for ill purpose. So when it is said that no one can obtain these reports, know that we can, we do, and can prove the authenticity of them as well. In closing, we have the USDA reports. We are 100% in the compliance with this ordinance that you guys put into place. We are dealing with responsible and reputable breeders. Anyone who says otherwise is providing you with false information. I don't believe fraudulent information should be the base of an ordinance that is used as a reasoning to shut down a local business. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalia Sanabria, followed by Madison McDowell.
Good afternoon, my name is Natalia Sanabria. I reside in Hillsborough County. It was said at the last meeting that, quote, "It is clear to me that only a complete ban on the sale of commercially-bred dogs can end the cruelty," end quote. But with all due respect, if this is passed, this will in fact adversely affect the animals, and I want to be very clear about that, it will hurt the animals. So let's review this evidence. While all have these bans accomplished, HSUS states there are 10,000 puppy mills, and this statistic has been changed in over, hasn't been changed in over a decade. So these bans aren't shutting down puppy mills. But what we are seeing is an increase in online puppy sales, which are completely unregulatable. You don't know where the puppies, these dogs are coming from, how they are kept, or even if the dogs exist. Roughly 1.06 million are being imported annually from bringing in illnesses or detrimental, sorry, are being imported annually, bringing in illnesses that are detrimental to pets and humans alike. Animals are suffering in foreign puppy mills, and we becoming the dumping ground for them. Illegal pet imports is the animal welfare concern of our time. Animals are being imported illegally from countries all over the world with falsified documents. They are shipping underage puppies, and when this fails, they are shipping pregnant females days before birth to get around regulations and get puppies into the country to meet the demand, all at the expense of the animals, but in the name of rescue. Nonprofit organizations are now purchasing animals from auction, directly from breeders, and from pet stores to meet the demand of what the public wants without having to adhere to regulations. When we have our rescue organizations that are popping up as quickly as a 501(c)(3) application allows, we have had almost 30 cases in the last year in which rescue organizations were neglecting and mistreating animals in their care. And this ordinance does not, on the books or anything, they all exempt the liability for treating animals this way. I don't want to forget the pet laundering schemes that have been taking place across the country, but mainly in states with bans like California. Pet dealers are turning animals from nonprofit status to continue sourcing purposely bred pets to the community, but under the guise that they're a rescue. Then we have people who are literally loading up trucks, driving around, and selling these puppies to the public. Then we have, this is all due to not having an eligible source for the public to obtain puppies from where they want. So please explain to me and your other constituents on how illuminating two small businesses and the reputable breeders that they work with from a community is going to put an end to this cruelty, when instead, all you're going to do is give a place for all the underground pet trafficking arrangements to set up a new location. If you decide to continue on this unthought-out proposal and join the other communities that have made this mistake, we cannot stop you. However, don't claim it's for the best interest of the animals or your constituents. We know better than that. To anyone who thinks prohibition is a better consumer protection practice...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Madison McDowell, followed by Alexa Julian.
Hello, my name is Madison McDowell, and I reside in Hillsborough County. I am here today to discuss the 70 municipalities with similar ordinances across the state. I handed you a folder, and ask that you please open it to the first page. To begin, the representation of support for these ordinances is a commonly-used and entirely inaccurate portrayal of the truth. And the truth is that 75% of these ordinances were passed in communities without existing businesses, and did not have a negative impact or opposition present. The truth is that of the remaining 25%, five stores were grandfathered in, eight sued their counties, and eventually settled, moving to neighboring counties that supported their businesses. Falsities were presented in localities in these communities in efforts to convince them to pass this ordinance. Even still, 70 municipalities seems excessive, right? It's not hard work and research that gets this movement brought up to a community near you. Try a step-by-step instruction guide. If you turn to the step-by-step tab, you'll see the HSUS has a handbook that outlines how to pass these bans regardless of the independent variables that may apply to that unique community. I do not understand what qualifies this organization to deem that every business selling dogs should be banned, yet Hillsborough County has fallen victim to this grossly misrepresented collection of support that has brought us here today. They do not distinguish between communities. They do not distinguish between a reputable breeder and a substandard breeder. Their belief is that the retail sale of animals should be banned altogether, regardless of the care and conditions that are provided to our animals and their parents. These statistics appear as a bandwagon tactic, generalizing as if this ordinance has support across our state, and that is just simply not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexa Julian, followed by Rebecca Mojica.
Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Alexa Julian, and I live in 2124 West Brandon Boulevard, and I'm here to oppose the county's potential decision to ban the retail sale of cats and dogs. The last time I was here in this room, I, along with my friends, family, and work colleagues, were filled with heartbreak, horror, but most of all outrage, the unfair way we were not only being, we were only being represented by animal activists, but also some of our county commissioners. That is something that has been weighing heavily on my mind since this potential ban came to our attention these past two months. So what I would like to say is that I believe that this ban is not about helping and rescuing animals from cruelty of commercial breeding. This is about abuse of power, political gain, discrimination, and misusing trust that we as citizens of Florida have placed on you, and this is how you decide to repay us, by taking our livelihood away because of one person who we were not even affiliated with, awful mistake that all of you knew about for two decades, and decided now is the right time to take action. How convenient must be for those in favor of a ban to have this happen while you have activists breathing down your necks to shut us down, and now you're finally going through with possibly passing a proposal to ban us. You want to shut our stores down and take my father's legacy away from him, fine. Use whatever grounds you would like to use, except for mistreatment of animals by us and our breeders we work with, which no one in this room can prove because it does not exist. My sister Alexandra Julian's picture, she has with our breeders, are proof of that. What you all are doing is not only wrong, it is unjust, it is unlawful, and it is inhumane, taking away small business, making innocent people become unemployed, but most importantly, taking away your citizens' right to choose where they get their forever pet. It's their puppy, therefore, it should be their choices to where they get their dog from, and you are taking that choice away from them.
Rebecca Mojica, followed by Pedro Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Mojica, and I reside in Hillsborough County, and I do not support the pet store retail ban.
Thank you. Pedro Hernandez, followed by Amanda Bush.
My name is Pedro Hernandez. I reside in Brandon, Florida. I am here against banning the retail sale of dogs and cats. In 2017, we were under the impression that Hillsborough County was taking a stand against irresponsible breeders, and in doing so, was promoting the responsible. We were not aware that this ordinance was solely serving a purpose of doing away with, one, a backyard breeding operation that we were not affiliated with, never have, never will be. Had the proper research been conducted in 2016, PRC would not have been on a witch hunt for the last three years, and this ordinance would have been drafted much differently in order to ensure that the breeder in question would have applied to regulations. Comparing that operation with ours is comparing apples to oranges. It should have been immediately obvious that this operation was lying in every single gray area, and should have never been leveled into category with licensed and honest pet retail establishments. In 2017, during the process of writing this ordinance, the AAC, this board, and us were not made aware of the details of that operation. How was anyone supposed to effectively draft legislation without the proper framework? The lack of knowledge our county possessed on this matter is what led us here today, not the responsible pet stores. Had anyone taken a closer look at the regulations at the federal and state level, it would have been immediately obvious that this breeder was not qualified to have a USDA license, based on the fact that she was selling directly to the public. Even without this, she was operating under a grooming facility license, which again, would not make them apply to this ordinance. This operation was open for over 20 years. Although the county officials were aware of her establishment, we are still in shock that this is the reason our business is on the chopping block. Can somebody please tell us why our business is being stripped from us when we did not in any way violate the parameters you guys set for us? I ask that this commission discontinue using its underground pet dealer as reasoning to ban our business. Using that situation to support this ordinance is equivalent to banning pharmacies because they're illegal drug dealers. And also, sir, Commissioner Miller, best of luck with your daughter and all that stuff. I have a family member going through that as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Amanda Bush, followed by David McAllister.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Bush. I live here in Hillsborough County, and I'm back again to support my family's business All About Puppies. Someone commented at the last meeting on all the man-hours our county has spent attending to our stores, but accumulated over the two-year period since the ordinance has been in place, it's looking at about six hours of hard labor in reviewing paperwork and visiting with puppies. However, what we will not claim are the hours spent trying to control the underground breeding situation. That is not our burden to bear, as a county spent 20 years dealing with this situation before this ordinance was even in the picture. It was said that 25 stores converted in California in 90 days. How do we know that? Oh, sure, maybe they did convert, and maybe they are involved in the huge pet laundering scheme that has now surfaced in California. Maybe these business owners and employees are now part of the homeless population in California. How do you know? So to quote from the last meeting on a separate issue, "I am appalled. I am appalled at the Commissioners who allowed the information they provided in regards to this issue to be so skewed." All because they didn't take the time to reach out to the stakeholders, being just two, two local small businesses that have repeatedly attempted to reach out to clarify and/or refute the information they were being fed from small... and/or refute the information they were being fed from small interest groups. So to second another quote from the last meeting made on a separate issue, "If you have a problem with me, come to me." We know your time is precious, but if you sit down for just a second and think this through, common sense will show you that this is not accurate information at the base of this proposal. When you sit down and review everything from the illegal pet imports to the pet loading, to people loading up trucks and selling dogs on the side of the road, do you really think this is a solution? Do you really believe this is what is best? Do you really think this is going to positively affect animals? As it stands, the animals are not your priority. If you really are, if you're really willing to sacrifice the animals for a feel-good ordinance, so be it. But do not try to pass your problems and your transgressions onto us. We have been in business for twenty-five years. We've built our business on integrity and we will not accept anything less from those who we are affiliated with, including this commission. We will not stand by idly and let you scar our reputation. Moving forward with the ban is not responsible and it is not necessary, and I want that on the record. Thank you.
David McAllister, followed by Ellen Snelling.
Good morning, commissioners. David McAllister, as you know, I come here occasionally to advocate for recognition and appreciation of local veterans and local history, especially that of the period of the war between the states. As to today's proclamations, I would note that I too, or I am, a patient at Moffitt. I'm not a cancer survivor yet, but I hope to be and join you, Commissioner. As to item A9, which is very popular today, I'm very familiar with playbooks and bandwagon tactics. And as a general proposition, I don't like bans. I don't like restrictions. On agenda item A11, the Historic Preservation Grant, I'm not personally familiar with the Gulf Millwork Building, but I do support this program. This is one of the best things that Hillsborough County has come up with. As to agenda item A33, support for James Tokely, our local poet laureate, I think it's a good thing to support our local artists and writers. I endorse my fellow alumnus of the Diversity Advisory Council here in Hillsborough. And I note that such stipends have a long history. And now, I want to remind you that the Scots have an old saying, "He who pays the piper calls the tune." So, as a Hillsborough taxpayer, I'd like to suggest, in the spirit of inclusion and diversity, that Mr. Tokely consider writing an ode or elegy in honor of Southern History Month and Confederate Memorial Day, which will be coming up in April, and we could read it out at a ceremony at the Hillsborough County Monument, Memorial in Eternia, which is in Brandon. And speaking of remembering forever, I see that your counterparts over at the city council have set up a commission of some kind to do something about the horrible situation of the so-called lost cemeteries. This is terrible. It's not just about ground. It's about lost family members, which we appreciate. The Southern community is all for remembering. I just hope they at the city council have more consideration for memorials and family feelings and pay less attention to communist political agitation than this board has sometimes shown. One last thought. It might be nice next January to show some class at the Super Bowl for our halftime show and have ladies in evening gowns and maybe even some Confederate flags to showcase our area rather than pole dancers and crotch grabbing. Thank you very much.
Good morning, commissioners. Ellen Snelling. And I just wanted to make one comment. I know there's been a lot said about-
Ms. Snelling, can you speak up a little bit?
Okay, sure. How about that?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a specific comment on the puppy ordinance, but I just want to say, don't forget, when you're talking about choices, that we always have the choice to go down to Hillsborough County Pet Resources. I have two rescues myself. I got Tigger at Pet Resources. He's been a great family member. Just want to remind everybody of that choice. I'm here to represent the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance and the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Hillsborough to hope that you will pass the resolution to make age twenty-one for the age of tobacco and vaping and support of Senate Bill 810. I think that it's a great bill and we would like to go on record of supporting it. And also to thank you very much for passing, back in 2019, the vaping ordinance. Really appreciate that because I think you're all looking out for our young people, including the ages of eighteen to twenty. I do have a statement from the Tampa Bay Asthma Coalition. They weren't able to be here today. It's a nonprofit organization in Hillsborough County seeking to decrease the burden of asthma and lung health issues in the community. And they also request your support for Senate Bill 810. Youth and young adults with asthma are unaware of the negative consequences of secondhand smoke and vaping. And to protect our most vulnerable, our children and our young adults, we request that you support the resolution. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the item A10. And this is marijuana possession, less than twenty grams, to make it a civil citation. And I am in support of that. I just want to make a couple of comments. Just, we need to remember that marijuana is a drug. It is addictive. It's ten to twenty times stronger than it was in the seventies. So a twenty-gram amount is not a small amount. It actually can roll forty to sixty joints. Just to throw that out there. It is addictive, has many adverse health consequences, including possibly psychosis. So we're in support of the civil citations, but if possible, we would recommend the education and assessment part of this ordinance to start at the second offense, if possible. Right now, it's at the third and fourth. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Lampria. Mike Lampria. Yoshika Ozawa. Followed by Jim Davison.
Hi, my name is Yoshika Ozawa and I reside in Hillsborough County. My store, Puppies Tampa, has had no violations. When we have our yearly inspections, we follow by all the rules. We only hire USDA breeders with no violations. We have microchips that are activated to our store. We have up-to-date health certificates and warranties. Puppies Tampa is a clean environment with an intelligent and caring staff. We remain the safer choice for purchasing animals, for we have health standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Davison, followed by Michelle Walker.
Good morning, Commissioner Jim Davison from New Tampa. Today, and perhaps right at this very moment, Commissioner's White Legal Team is arguing before the Florida Supreme Court to overturn the sales tax perpetrated upon the people of Hillsborough County. I am not here to reargue that, the Charter Amendment or the ordinance. I'm here to ask you if one of the consequences of the ordinance and the Charter Amendment, that being a tax, is a reasonably expected consequence. The consequence I am speaking of is the need to levy another tax strictly for transportation. In the MPO's 2045 plan, they included a tax that was not included in the 2040 plan. Before you is the financial package of the revenue streams for the 2045 plan. Thirty-two billion dollars. Ten billion dollars more than the 2040 plan. The sales tax I'm talking of is the CIT tax. They included, out of necessity, because of the spending allocations that were enforced by this board in the ordinance, to incorporate the entire CIT tax to be spent solely on transportation for the next twenty-five years. Twenty years, actually, from twenty-six to forty-five. That means you will not be allowed to use the CIT tax for parks. The sheriff won't be able to buy cars. Fire department will not be able to build stations. There will be no environmental land purchases with the CIT tax. There will be nothing bought with the CIT tax, except that that has to do with transportation. And I'm here to ask you today, because they did it with your blessing and the vote of some of the people here, is that a reasonable use for twenty years of the CIT tax? Currently, only twenty-six percent of the CIT tax is spent on transportation. They want to up it to seventy-five percent, and they implied you by voting on it as the commissioners on the MPO. Is that a reasonable use of the CIT tax? You know, we, somebody's not being told the truth here. The U.S. Department of Transportation is being told that it's reasonable. And then you're going to turn around and market that sales tax when it has to be repped in 2026. Somebody is not telling the truth. And I would urge the board to go back and take a look at that and get together with the MPO and change that plan. You can amend it. The consequences if the U.S. Department of Transportation doesn't accept it are dire. Thank you.
Michelle Walker is our last speaker.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Walker. I just wanted to make a comment. Just wanted to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to the board. For the, over the last twenty years, we've had the opportunity to serve this community in the Tampa Bay area. And as this city continues to grow and flourish, I just wanted to thank the board for having a heart for the people of this community. Over the last year, we've had the opportunity to work with the county on several different projects. Each of these projects are really just to help ensure that the people in the community have a safe place to live, as well as preventing homelessness. And we'll continue to ensure that we work with the people in our community and receive the social services that they need. As we just go forward and move into 2020, I know I wanted to just say to you all that the work that you do will continue to go forward for generations to come and just to say thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to hear somebody to thank us. We've been beat up a lot this morning. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Commissioner Murman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull A9 for a separate vote.
You're pulling A9 for separate vote?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any objection? Make a motion to do that.
I'm the, well, generally, I mean, we can pull items for separate consideration, but I mean, I'll make a motion to pull A9 for a separate vote and consideration.
The motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith to pull item A9. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
So we can pull consent items without, I thought we had to have twenty-four hours notice.
You do.
You can vote against it if you want to. She made a motion and accepted the motion. If you don't want to vote for it, just vote against it. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Is there a distinction between pulling for separate vote and pulling for discussion? That might be the distinction.
You want to clarify that?
Yeah, I'm just reading from your Rules of Order and it provides that, the deadline for withdrawal of an item from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and votes shall not apply to an abstention or negative vote on the consent agenda item. So you can pull it to vote no, but not, if you wanted to discuss it or have a thing, then you would need a, to waive the rules and have a majority plus one.
So you can pull it just for a separate vote, but not for discussion?
You have to waive the rules.
Only for, only for discussion?
Then you need a majority plus one.
But that's only for discussion?
So Commissioner Murman, you're pulling this for discussion or you're pulling it for?
Okay, can I just say what the purpose of my, what I'm trying to do? I believe there is bills in Tallahassee dealing with this issue. And I feel like we should continue this until after the legislative session, because it could be a moot point to bring all these people back for the next public hearing, the next vote. And then we are, and then it ends up, the legislature passes bills that deal with this very issue and go forward.
Well, in that case, what I'm hearing from attorney, that can't happen unless we-
I have to make a motion to waive the rules. Okay.
So withdraw your other motion and make a new motion.
Okay, so I will withdraw the other motion. And I'll make a motion to waive the rules to allow A9 for a separate consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith. It's a further discussion of the motion to waive the rules. See none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to two. Commissioners Hagan and Kemp voted no.
So at this point, Mr. Murman, what I want to do is take up the consent agenda for approval and then come back and take up A9 at that point, okay? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve the consent agenda, send it for a discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We now take up A9. Is anything further you want to say, Mr.?
No. I just, I want to move to continue it until after the legislative session.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith to continue A9 until after the legislative session. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Having been a citizen who comes to the board for issues many times before I became a commissioner, I understand the hardship on citizens to make it here time after time on things that they're passionate about. And seeing that the legislature, as the state legislature, is just on the verge of taking action that might make all of this unnecessary, all of it unnecessary for citizens on both sides to continually arguing this in front of us one more time, I just think it makes sense to hold off a couple of months and see what the legislature does with this and see if it's even necessary for us to go through this. So I'll be supporting the motion to continue.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
I understand the convenience issue and burden on citizens coming down here for and against the ordinance, but I, it was my impression that we were intentional, that we intentionally wanted to take action in advance of the legislative session because our action would not necessarily be preempted by the state. Is that accurate, Christine, or not?
Well, it really depends on what the legislature does. So if they, right now, as the bills are written, it has a very clear preemption language that says that the regulation of pet stores will be preempted to the state. It's a very simple, clear statement. But you all know that as it goes through the process, those bills could be amended, they may not make it out of committee, or they could be passed. So it's really an unknown until the legislative session is finished.
Okay. Typically, I would support the motion, but I think this issue deserves to move forward here locally.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I just think that we could preempt virtually anything or do this to any item on our agenda. And I hear it all the time, the legislature is going to change this. Why are we doing this? In fact, we discussed here about a year ago, or when you all were, when the two new commissioners were not here, the marijuana ordinance. And fifteen minutes later, they were, you know, preempting our ability to do it. You know, when we took it up, and it wasn't even noticed that the special session would be doing that. So I think that that applies to virtually everything we do. I almost think, well, let's, you know, maybe we should not meet then during the legislative session until after it's over, just, you know, because I don't even know what, you know, I just think so much of what we do that could happen to. So I, I just think we just move forward with this despite that and, you know, go on the schedule.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith to pull A9 and temporarily pass it until after the legislative session. I'm conflicted because I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. Because I was a- Because I was in the legislature 14 years, just like Commissioner Murman is. It's just like the, Ms. Beck said, this bill could get to the floor and the sponsor wouldn't even recognize it because of all amendments on it. So I'm right now, I don't know how I'm going to vote. I guess I'll wait till I get ready to push this button. We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to three. Commissioners Hagan, Kemp, and Overman voted no.
Okay. So at this point now, we have to, we have to move A9.
So moved.
That's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman to approve A9 as it was in the consent agenda. Since there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, that was exciting. Mr. Murman?
Can't top that. So we're at our time certens, 10:00 AM public hearing, starting with D1.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Murman, this, Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Director. This morning, we're here to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan and to close the public comment period, which began on January 23rd, 2020, and approve the Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. The estimated FY '20 fiscal impact of adopting the Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan is $10 million, and is included in the adopted FY '20 budget.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, and I have a list of people that would like to speak. Everyone has three minutes. Again, the timer is on the podium here, and another one near the Elmo. You have three minutes. When that yellow light gets, comes on, that's 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is up. We're going to start with Brian Brayley, followed by Jim Davison.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Commissioner and members of the Commission. I'm Brian Brayley, and I'm a member of the First United Church of Christ here in Tampa. And I'm here speaking this morning on behalf of Hope concerning the Affordable Housing Fund that you have, you have created. Hope is here to repeat its appeal on behalf of those workers at the 50% and below area median income. Some of you will remember that when six years ago we first appeared, Hope brought forth this issue on, for these workers. We were told at early meetings with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board that no one else was coming to raise this problem up as a problem. And we were advised to go out and establish the data that would show the existence of this problem, which we did. And that data supported the case that the great need is there for housing at workers at 50% and below AMI, and was, along with personal stories presented to this board, perhaps enough times to be boring. But each time of telling, it told the same story. Those at 50% and below area median income represent those with greatest need, based upon their numbers in the community and based upon the amount of their disposable income that they must commit to housing. And that, this part of our community is underserved by the standard affordable housing funding mechanisms, such as low-income housing tax credit programs. It's time to give this part of our community a boost relative to others who are also seeking affordable housing, but whose needs are already being adequately or more adequately addressed by those other housing programs. This fund is the right mechanism. It's a local fund, and it can be directed where you want it to go. And we're asking you to direct half of this fund to those at 50% below AMI and half above that level. This is fair, and it is also supported by the data and by the stories that have been told to you folks here. So thank you for listening, and thank you for creating this fund.
Thank you. Jim Davison, followed by Kim DeBozier.
Hello again, Commissioners. Jim Davison. I want to commend the board for making this $10 million start in affordable housing. It's decades, it should have been started decades ago. The one concern I have is that it is not enough. It has to be much larger. And where it is going to address affordable housing is not a stationary target. There are going to be things done in the county by the government, in the city of Tampa, that is going to change the permutation. People are going to be gentrified, and they're going to be displaced. And if you do not account for that, you are not going to get the full value of your $10 million. No one, and I mean no one, in this county, whether at heart, whether at the MPO, is considering the ramifications of their decisions in this problem. I would ask you to take a small amount of this money to investigate it so that the county and the taxpayers and the people in the purple shirts will get the full value of this $10 million. It starts with a shelter over your head, then transportation. You will hear this afternoon a competitive report that was given at Cafe Con Tampa about a week ago. The author of that report was asked the question, what comes first, affordable housing or transportation? His reply was transportation. An executive director, former executive director of the Planning Commission in Hillsborough County and the MPO, said that gentrification and displacement is a natural phenomenon of progress. I do not think this board shares that value. So I urge you, take some of the money so that we can keep moving with the needs for affordable housing. I appreciate it, and thanks again for the $10 million. It was a wonderful start.
Kim DeBozier, followed by Ed Cronin.
Good morning, Chairman Miller and Commissioners. My name is Kim DeBozier, and I'm here today on behalf of the Tampa Bay Chamber to comment on the Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. As a business membership organization, we understand the importance of attainable housing to the economic vitality of Tampa Bay. In my capacity as the Chamber's Policy Council Co-Chair, I want to reiterate the importance of investment in attainable housing initiatives that are inclusive of diverse levels of income, to include 80% to 120% of AMI, which is how the Chamber defines workforce housing. This range includes employees from a wide variety of professions and industries, including construction, retail, hospitality, and other service industries, firefighters, police, our service members, teachers, and healthcare professionals. So without objection, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit a formal letter of support from our President and CEO, Bob Orlat. Thank you.
Give it to the clerk there, please. Thank you. Ed Cronin, followed by Sean Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ed Cronin. I worship at Hyde Park United Methodist Church and also participate in our justice ministry through the Portico campus downtown, which is how I belong to Hope. As I stand before you today, there are two main reasons I want you to consider as we request not the full $10 million we asked before, but just half of that, just $5 million annually towards the people who are at 50% or below AMI, also categorized as very low income. And those two reasons are mercy and investment. I urge you to please have mercy on those who need the most help, the families who are at or below very low income. One thing we learned is the number one cause of homelessness is lack of affordable housing. So by investing in this HOPE Act for very low-income individuals, you're preventing homelessness before it even occurs. Homelessness is a devastating issue. I was at a service just last week where 69 names were read of people who died on the streets just last year. And that's probably an undercount. I knew a few of them. Unfortunately, it's too late for Mary, whose loud voice could fill the room. Her voice is quiet now. It's too late for Igor, the master chess player, who could tell a joke at the same time as beating you in chess. It's too late for Chad, the young man who wanted to become a pastor and studied the Bible every single day. But it's not too late for the working families who are looking to you for some help as they're just trying to make their next month's rent. This is why we focus so much on very low income. There are certainly other income levels that need help, but these are the folks who will be on the streets or in their cars if not for an investment in affordable housing for very low-income families. But if mercy isn't enough, please also consider the investment opportunity. Children who are in homes with unstable housing results in less than one-third of the passing rate for English-language arts, less than half the rate of passing math, and almost, a little less than third of the passing rate for science for the FSA and SSA as compared to families who do have homes over their head. This cuts them off from contributing to our local economy. So when you invest in their families, helping their families to be able to afford their rent through contributions to very low income, it is investment in their future, as well as in the future of Hillsborough County's economy. I want to thank you again for naming the Affordable Housing Act after HOPE. I would ask that you not only consider this as a name, but also please consider our priority and your priority and the county's mercy and investment in targeting this towards, at least half of it, towards very low-income families.
Thank you. Sean Wilson, followed by Gretchen DeVazio. Savio.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners and members of the public. I want to thank you for your commitment, for making these funds available, for passing the ordinance, for following through. I want to congratulate HOPE for all their hard work. I'm with Blue Sky Communities. We're at 5300 West Cypress Street. Not only do I run an affordable housing development company, but I'm also the chairman of the Coalition of Affordable Housing Providers of Florida. It's a membership organization. We have about 90 members all around the state. And our primary goal is to advocate in Tallahassee for affordable housing funds, which generally means trying to prevent or minimize the sweep of the Sadowski Fund. So I'm out there fighting that fight, and I know that that's important to the county, too. So I'm with you on that. Blue Sky Communities has built a few tax credit communities in the unincorporated area, some in some higher-income suburban zones, some in some more urban zones. Our average income level of our residents is about 57% of AMI. They're nice communities. They're well-kept. Our residents, about 80% of the adults are in the workforce. 20% are on fixed income, Social Security, VA, et cetera. The 80% that are in the workforce, they are in hospitality, retail, tourism, construction. They make about $10 or $15 an hour per adult. That's the target market that we serve in our low-income housing tax credit communities. We're getting ready to finish what I think is our most spectacular one, which y'all provided the first bit of funding for, so we're appreciative of that. That's Preserve at Sable Park. That's at the corner of Williams and Broadway. I would invite you to drive by it. And of course, you're all going to be invited to the ribbon cutting, which we'll have probably at the end of March. We're, we have in the works what is definitely our most exciting and our most interesting tax credit development ever. It's called Uptown Sky. It's on Fletcher. It fronts on Fletcher. Fletcher and 12th, so it's really close to 275, close to Nebraska, close to the railroad tracks. It has great transit, has great walkability. It's close to employment centers. And we are in a joint venture with UACDC on that development. Y'all approved an affordable housing density bonus last year. We took it through the rezoning. So it's ready to go, and it's really the kind of a development that, that I hope, that I hope can compete for HOPE funds in the future. And we're looking forward to bringing that in front of you guys very soon. So thank you very much again, and congratulations to HOPE.
Thank you. Gretchen DeVazio, followed by Charlie Lurch.
Good morning, Commissioners. And you've got my name. I like that. We thank you for naming this ordinance for the congregations of HOPE. I'm from St. Andrews United Methodist Church in Brandon. And I've lived in Brandon for over 14 years. But when I first was working there, I noticed so many people coming out of the Walmarts without bags, but they had washed up for the day. And I couldn't believe, in a beautiful suburban area like that, that there was so much homelessness. So we are asking that you put half of the $10 million towards the housing for those that are at 50% of the AMI. These people are the most vulnerable. They have the greatest need for housing that's decent and affordable. Focusing more resources on housing for low-income people can prevent homelessness. It reduces the public outlay, and it provides family stability. Our church works with Nativity Church, and we have a group called Family Promise. These are homeless families that we help to have stability for, you know, through the year so that they can get themselves in a position where they've saved up the first month, last month, and a deposit so that they can get into housing. But so many times, they will be all ready to go, and they can't graduate because there is no housing that they can afford. So that's why I know, as we help set up for these groups of people every week, and they keep coming, that we need this for the most vulnerable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlie Lurch, followed by Roger Cope, a cop.
Good morning. Charlie Lurch from Nativity Catholic Church and a HOPE Board member. You know, it is in hearing the heartfelt stories, those that we have shared in the past, as well as some that Ed relayed to you today. Those are from our 23-member congregations and neighbors, as well as doing the local research, that we, we at HOPE, understand the housing needs of families with very low incomes who struggle at 50% AMI and below. We know the negative impact this has on family stability and access to needed medicine, food, and children's success in school. We do need housing for the teachers, the police officers, nurses, and firefighters, and we need them to have decent pay and living conditions. But we must also understand the great needs of our janitors and our teachers' aides and the nurses' aides, and those who struggle economically simply to meet their basic needs. That is why for six years, HOPE has told the stories of the very low-income families and seniors to you. Our county commissioners, and we ask you to establish a local affordable housing fund that can meet their critical needs. We were so glad when the HOPE Affordable Housing Act was passed last September. Now, we are asking you to start this fund in the correct way, by starting the draft of the HOPE Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. We are asking that $5 million, or half of the $10 million fund, be used to create housing for families at the 50% AMI, not the 30%. It's important that we start this right. We believe the flexibility of this special local housing fund should be used to meet the most pressing current needs of our community. It does not need to be, nor should it be, distributed according to state or federal restrictions. Let's make this fund meet the most pressing need of our residents, those that live and work here in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Cope, a cop, followed by Gail Jones.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Roger Cope. And I worship at Hyde Park United Methodist Church. And I'm on the board of the Portico Workforce Housing Initiative, which provides bridge housing for working men who are homeless. Our, our program is designed as transition housing, lasting for six months to a year, and case management is provided. Portico Workforce Housing Initiative has two houses, each with three bedrooms. Each house has a washer and a dryer available free to our tenants. Rent is $75 a week with $100 deposit. It's available to homeless men who are working and who do not want to be living on the street. It's supported entirely from contributions from our church and from Love Inc. of Tampa, which is also funded entirely from contributions from individuals and churches. Currently, we do not rely on any support from Hillsborough County or the city of Tampa, because most of the funds for affordable housing come with a lot of overhead that our small, little organization cannot handle. These men want to take a shower at the end of the day and put on a clean set of clothes in the morning before they go to work. in the morning before they go to work. Portico Workforce Housing Initiative is intended to stabilize the living situation for our tenants so they can get a good night's sleep, so they can do a good job at work, build up credit, save some money, and transition to a self-sufficient lifestyle. Our tenants enter the program making less than fifteen dollars an hour and typically struggle to work forty hours a week because a lot of employers bring people on and only give them part-time work. Therefore, they are part of the very low-income category. We have a constant waiting list. Our problem is that these men have very limited housing options once they graduate from our program. We need more money for affordable housing for the very low income so that there are options for our tenants. If our tenants have affordable housing to move to, we can serve more homeless men who desperately want to get off the street. Please dedicate fifty percent of your funds to the very low income. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Jones, followed by Erwin Morgan.
As a fourth-generation African-American female Tampa native, I urge the Board of County Commissioners to prioritize Hope Affordable Housing Fund for our community. I'm a single parent, raising a special-niche child, and a dedicated registrar employed with the Hillsborough County Public Schools classified as an Education Support Personnel ESP. Even with all the structured public school raises, my 2019 annual gross was only twenty-one thousand, thus earning thousands of dollars below the income median for a family of two. Many committed ESPs such as site-based clericals, paraprofessionals, custodians, Tampa natives, and residents in this great city of Tampa are negatively affected by the social income equality. Affordable housing programs now only help to close the income gap for many of us dreaming and preparing to purchase our first home. Prioritizing the Hope Affordable Housing Fund further decreases the Hillsborough County homeless recidivism rate. As a Hillsborough Community College alumni and a baccalaureate candidate of social work intern graduating with a 3.743 GPA, I'm accruing more student loan debt to increase my income to qualify, to purchase, and to afford a comfortable home for my daughter and me. Board of County Commissioners, I am almost there. So on today, we, the community, we, the people, need our county to prioritize and maintain Hope Affordable Housing Fund to continue to support certified housing advisors and programs readily assisting families with very low-level incomes with homebuyer's education, fostering sustainable homeownership. Again, Board of County Commissioners, I am almost there. Thank you.
Sounds like you're going to get there pretty soon.
I was ready.
Erwin Morgan, followed by Sheila Simmons-Tribble.
Good morning. My name is Erin Morgan, and I am speaking on behalf of the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers' Association. That is the official bargaining representative of Hillsborough County Public School employees. So we represent teachers, but we also represent paraprofessionals and clericals, and they unfortunately still constitute what I would consider and is considered a low-wage workforce that is couched within our public school system. And I wanted to talk a little bit about what exactly it is that we count on our paraprofessionals and our clericals to do in our school system. These folks are the face of our public schools. When you drop your kiddo off in the morning, the first person you see is somebody who's in our bargaining unit. These folks work with some of our highest-needs students, so think of the folks that are in our centers, medically needy children, some of the most at-risk students are cared for by our paraprofessionals. So there is a lot of responsibility there. And unfortunately, the wages are still falling well within what is considered below that fifty percent median. And you might be asking, well, they have a union, shouldn't the union be fixing this? And the truth is, we're trying, like, we are. We, over the past five, six years, have increased the wages roughly twenty-five to thirty percent, so that's about three percent to six percent a year, and it's still, it's still not where it should be. And so, you know, part of my job is I go out to school sites, and I have one-on-one conversations with all our folks, and I try to get people signed up to join us, to join their union, so that we can make the changes we want to see. And I've had too many conversations where joining is a stumbling block because their budgets are so tight. Like, they will, like, after housing, this is a real thing, right? Like, they show me their budgets, and more than half is going to housing. Even the healthcare that they receive through the school district, if they're trying to support a family, I kid you not, there are folks that literally don't make money because all of their extra pay is going to supporting healthcare for their children. So this is a real, actual, tangible need for, you know, not just our paraprofessionals and our clerical workers, but, I mean, so many people. And so this is real, and so on behalf of the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association, we do urge you to please put half of those funds towards our low-income people.
Thank you. Sheila Simmons-Tribble, followed by Justin LaRosa.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sheila Simmons-Tribble. I'm a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church and a proud member of Hope, and I do live here in Hillsborough County. In our county, at least two-hundred-thousand families of all income levels can't afford housing, yet forty percent of these families have incomes of at least fifty percent AMI and below, and must spend at least half of this income on housing. This is where the greatest need is there. This is why we now ask that the first two-year Hope Affordable Housing Biennial Plan to use the fund for families with very low income. Support workers like nurses' aides, teachers' aides, cafeteria workers, janitors, and healthcare aides need affordable housing. Take Ms. Beth Forney, single parent of two children, healthcare aide, providing health services for my cousin, describing her financial situation of ten dollars an hour and her desperate need for decent, affordable housing for her children. That's why creating workforce housing should include the workforce whose income cannot even get conventional mortgages or affordable market-rate rent. This is very important. We ask that half of the ten-million-dollar fund to be used to create housing that is affordable for these workers like Ms. Forney. This does not preclude any initiative by the county for the introduction of more workforce housing units. I'd like to say again, thank you very much for funding the Affordable Housing Act, and we do not believe that putting thirty percent or three million dollars of the ten-million-dollar fund toward housing for these families really honors the community dialogue of Hope, and we are asking then respectfully that you honor the intent of this special locally-funded Affordable Housing Fund and use the flexibility of the ordinance to spend half of the fund on decent housing that workers like Ms. Forney, seniors, and others at fifty percent AMI and below can afford decent housing. Thank you very much, and thank you again for funding the act.
Thank you. Justin LaRosa, followed by Barbara Toki.
Good morning. Grateful to be here. It's nice to have this conversation, really. My name's Justin LaRosa. I'm one of the ministers at Hyde Park United Methodist, also a licensed clinical social worker, and I'm down at the Portico, just down the street. And just everyone's giving you praise, as they should, about establishing this fund, and it's a good start. Thank you for the commitment and vision to make Tampa a city for all people, not just the wealthy, not just the ones that are getting forward with this expansion, this beautiful stuff that's happening right now. And as you've heard over and over again, there's two things to remember in this vote: fifty percent and half. Fifty percent and half. That's what we're asking for. That's what we want. That's what your conscience should tell you to do, and that's what the community is asking for. It's important. This fund can be a catalyst to transforming lives for those who are most forgotten. Like, we heard earlier, we raised a candle and we hit a gong for sixty-nine people who died on the streets of our community this year. It's unacceptable. Should be unacceptable to you, it's unacceptable to us, and we've got to figure out a way together. And this is one start. Homelessness, low income, there's a comp, it's very complex, but here's what's simple. The people who are poorest in our county have been getting table scraps for a long time, and programs that serve the lowest income often have been reduced over years. There's more of them. When I started at Hyde Park fifteen years ago, fifty people came for food on Sundays. You know what that number is now? Over two-hundred, sometimes two-hundred-and-fifty. And charity is a beautiful thing, but what we're talking about here is biblical justice from the Christian perspective. We're talking about power, we're talking about prestige, we're talking about opportunity, and you all have the power and the opportunity to help us. Fifty percent, half, that's what we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Barbara Toki, followed by Diana Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Tepke. I'm a member of Grace Lutheran Church and a member of Hope. Thank you for passing the Affordable Housing Act. I'm a retired teacher, so I made enough to buy a home. Custodians at my school, however, full-time, year-round employees, do not make fifteen dollars an hour or thirty thousand dollars a year. They earn below half of the area median income, which is thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty. With two kids, they pay half or more of their salary for housing. The custodians are busy working, so I came to speak up for them. In 2016, seventy-four thousand five hundred families in Hillsborough County earned fifty percent and below the area median income, so I came to speak up for them. Please direct fifty percent of the Affordable Housing Fund to those earning very low incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Anderson, followed by Geraldine Rogers Toomes.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Diana Anderson, and I just want to share one example of someone in very great need for housing. I've lived in Brandon for, in the same house, for almost forty-five years, and my next-door neighbor, Ruby, was there before I was. And she had a car accident, which began some of her medical issues, and eventually, she was not able to keep up her housing payments, her mortgage payments, and she asked the bank to reduce the amount. You know, I want to pay, I want to pay, but I can't pay as much, and that didn't happen. So she lost her home, and now she is on Medicare and Social Security, and her income was right around a thousand dollars a month, so that meant her income was twelve thousand dollars. And she has had to move out of the state in order to find a place to live. Thank you.
Geraldine Rogers Toomes, followed by our last speaker, which is Robert Boilou.
Good morning, Geraldine Rogers Toomes. In all, my time's up. In all due respect to your staff, we do not believe that putting thirty percent or just three million dollars of the ten-million-dollar Hope Fund towards housing for very low-income families honor the community dialogue about concentrating assistance towards helping the very low-income individuals and families. This doesn't reflect Hope's unwavering focus for an affordable housing fund for the very low-income citizens at fifty percent or below the area median income. Nor does three million dollars reflect the county's own Affordable Housing Advisory Board's December 2nd, 2019 recommendation to the board to use at least forty percent of the fund for people with very low incomes. This fund is, in fact, a new initiative that puts funds toward creating more housing, housing for workers with very low income who are part of the workforce. There are state and federal funds available to create and rehab housing for people with incomes at eighty to a hundred percent AMI and above. Again, we are requesting at least five million dollars of the ten-million-dollar Hope Affordable Housing Fund be used to create housing for families with very low incomes for the 2020 and 2021 budget. And, you know, coming here, I also thought about the fact that there was a time when this county was concerned about homeless and people being placed in substandard housing. They shut down the homeless recovery unit and changed it and moved in a different direction. And you know that, at that point, Hillsborough County was only paying three hundred and ten dollars a month for rent for people, one household, five, ten, or something like that, no matter how large the household is. Even at that time, that was not adequate funding to assist people with standard housing. You know, this situation is really imperative that we move in a positive direction or continue to move in a better direction, because if you do not have adequate money to meet your living expenses, then more than likely, you're going to live in substandard housing. The bottom line is, is that to apply half the funds towards those people at that very, very low-income tax bracket means that we're helping to improve the social and economic status of citizens in this county. Not only that, it has a positive impact on health and education, as previously stated. We urge you to help those that are in the greatest need, and I thank you for all that you do for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Robert Boilou.
Hello, I'm Robert Boilou. Greetings, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I won't reiterate what all has been said already. I just want to point out that we're not asking for fifty percent of five million be committed to folks at fifty percent and below AMI specifically. What we're asking is that the money be directed to help developers, such as Sean Wilson mentioned earlier, we spoke earlier, to provide mixed-income rental units, rental developments, so that some of those, some of those apartments would be for people at fifty percent and below, but others would be for above fifty percent, mixed income. Those developers, not only Blue Sky, but others as well, they are able to leverage the money from this fund and creatively innovate to make, get the funding, the rest of the funding they need. This provide, this fund is to provide gap funding so that they are able to afford to create and build affordable housing units for those most in need. Thank you.
Thank you. As close as our public hearing, we now move into board discussion. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Our affordable housing advocates, those folks here that may or may not be with Hope, but are all advocates for, have shined a bright light on the importance of prioritizing affordable housing to our very low-income citizens. Housing financing is very complex and a delicate balance, and maximizing our units for our very low-income citizens is our goal, yet flexibility is paramount towards maximizing projected affordable housing units and leveraging the investment tools that we have available to us in addition to these dollars. As currently written, the Biennial Plan aspires to have eighty-five-point-five percent of the funds from the Hope Affordable Housing Act to go to low and very low income. That's more than what you're asking for. Thus far, it's higher than sixty percent that's required by the ordinance, and I applaud the Affordable Housing Services Department for prioritizing these specific income amounts. It is paramount- It is paramount that our decisions are research and data-driven. Later, we're going to hear from the research done by USF professors from Muma College of Business. It demonstrates the intersection between transitory and development and affordable housing that serves low and very low-income residents in the county. To address this, we need to focus on multifamily, multi-use development with increased densities that are close in proximity to our transit resources. It is our ultimate goal to allow these very low-income citizens to have more dispensable income available to them to take care of their families. I have heard from our valued affordable housing industry professionals and their concerns regarding the recommended strategies. Staff has assured me that the RFPs, when ultimately created, will not be solely one strategy RFPs. Rather than, our request for proposals will attempt to build off as many categories as possible to maximize through the number of units, projected units, and the leverage of the money that we put towards affordable housing. I'd like to thank staff, the industry professionals, advocates, and the citizens who have contacted my office, and trust me, you've all been coming in to discuss the plan and to offer insights and concerns. We've heard you. The unfortunate truth is, we would not be here if the state weren't continuing to sweep the Sadowski Fund, which we need to work on managing since it is apparent that sweeps will continue to happen. But I plead with every person that contacted me to also any and all House of Representatives to share your advocacy for affordable housing. We need to hear it here and in Tallahassee to help people understand that we are dependent, our economic competitiveness requires our focus on affordable housing. Finally, I'd like to note that it is my understanding that this plan can be revisited if this first reiteration misses the mark or the goals in any way. As such, I'd like to make a motion to approve the biennial plan as submitted.
That was a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And Amanda, would you please put that chart on the Elmo? I'm asking her to put page three of your backup on the Elmo so we can take a look at the strategies that Commissioner Overman were, was mentioning, as well as the buckets. And I have, first of all, I'd like to take a look at these buckets that you mentioned at the, at the top. So that's, yeah, that's the strategies. And if you notice, the most bang for the buck is in the multifamily rental units. You get two hundred and forty-nine units for three and a half million dollars. That's fourteen thousand a unit. The second category, the PERS and infill, that's costing a hundred and eleven thousand a unit. And going further down that innovative housing category that we're allocating a million to, those units would be costing almost seventy-seven thousand each. So the, the most bang for the buck, the most, the cheapest units we can get is the multifamily category. Now, in that, I mean, housing is either multifamily or single-family. So in that multifamily, you can be doing that, or, or single-family, you can be doing infill. You can be doing innovative housing. But to your point, Commissioner Overman, about maximizing housing for the most vulnerable, I agree that it does require flexibility, and I think that these, some of these buckets are kind of restricting us and tying our hands. And so I would amend, offer an amendment to the motion that we would move the two million from PERS and infill into the multifamily category, move the one million from innovative housing into the multifamily rental. That would give us three million more in the multifamily rental, which would give us the most units for our money. And I believe that that would have the best chance also of being a win-win for HOPE and, and what the people that they're talking about and give us the best chance for addressing the needs of the teachers, the teachers aides, the nurses aides, the retail workers, the janitors, the custodians that are making less than fifty percent AMI. So that's my motion for an amendment.
Second by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
I'm, I'm not going to speak to the amendment.
Okay, we'll then come back to it.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp to the amendment.
Thank you. And I appreciate, first of all, thank you so much to everyone who's worked so hard on this and coming in over and over again and following this and caring so much about this, bringing it to our attention for several years now. Thank you very much. And I appreciate many of the comments of Commissioner Overman and as well, as I've seconded, the points that Commissioner Smith made. Just one, I believe correction on the math even. If you look at the PERS and infill, each unit, we're talking about fourteen million dollars between leverage and amount in each unit, and there's eighteen units. That's seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars per a unit, as opposed to ninety-eight thousand dollars per unit as calculated under multifamily rental. So we heard from you all. We know that there's an affordable crisis in this county for people to put a ceiling over their head, have a place for families to lie down at night, and we need to do something about it. We know that from the, our Tampa Housing, that the waiting list was twenty-two thousand, I believe, and closed, and closed. No one else can even ask for it. We know that we're not getting Sadowski Funds. I'm pretty sure we're not getting Sadowski Funds year after year after year, but even if we were, we'd still have to be doing this and paying attention to it. I want to get the most bang for our buck, as you've said. I want to house the most families. Under the current chart as we have, under the current allocations as we have it, there is a total of projected units, this is by what you just had up. We can provide three hundred and ninety-two units, places for people to put their heads at night. Under the amendment here that you have suggested, Commissioner Smith, we can provide five hundred and twelve units for people to house and lay their heads down at night. So that's three hundred and ninety-two units under this, or under the amendment, five hundred and twelve. So under the amendment, we would get projected here another hundred and twenty places, a hundred and twenty more units. So I am definitely supporting this. I think it's extremely important that we do everything we can. We are in an affordable crisis here. We know that we need more multifamily renting, rental available. We had today in the New York Times, there's an article that the country's in a crisis and we need affordable multifamily. We know we have that here, and we need to move forward and do something about it. And this is the very best we can do to help this crisis in our county. And again, thank you all for coming forward. I'm going to vote for the amendment because I think it will do, it will obviously do under the return on investment here. It will do the best that we possibly can to provide help for the most people.
Commissioner Overman to the amendment.
I, I understand your goals here, but I'm going to suggest to you that the numbers underneath each of the categories give us the flexibility to accomplish what you're asking for without making the changes. So for example, you know, there is nothing that would prohibit PERS funds from being multifamily. There's nothing to prohibit the special needs funds to be multifamily. There's nothing to prohibit the million dollars in innovation from being multifamily. So if your goal is to get multifamily, we have to have those other categories also addressed. The idea of having those other categories be described in our goals is to make sure that we're recognizing that those are key elements to addressing the needs of our citizens. So while the special needs category might be, you know, one point four or five million, that there's nothing to say that that wouldn't be multifamily, okay? But if we don't specify that we need to focus on that part of our citizenry, it may not end up happening. It's important that we make sure we take care of all of our citizens that frequently, because they may not speak as loudly as others, that their needs be met too. So there's not to say that your amendment will create that opportunity, and it's, and what I was going to say is, what's in the plan can help you get there without making this change. With making the change, it may lock us out of being able to provide those, those services to those individual. So I'm going to oppose the amendment to, because I think we can get where you want to go, but I don't want to do it to the exclusion of those that do have special circumstances that we need to care for. I don't want it to not go to those that are in private units, where they need, we need resources to help those individuals too. So I think we can get where you want to go without making these changes or without making the amendment, because we have a great staff to find that creativity. In the, in the work that we do with those that help us meet this, you know, with the developing community that's helping us meet these needs, you know, we have a way of ranking these projects when they come in the door, and it allows us the ability to achieve these goals. If we lump it all up into multifamily without the other categories being described, we won't be able to serve the broader community, but we can still hit the high percentages that we were looking for in terms of the income levels to serve. So I just wanted to make sure it's clear that this isn't siloing our efforts. This is actually creating some, some desired outcomes in the language so that we can allocate resources to those individuals that need the resources the most.
Commissioner Murman to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Overman, for those comments, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, for your comments. I mean, there's nothing bad here. In fact, here's the issue. We fought to get the ten million. Now we're fighting about how to spend it. I was really hoping we would not get to this place today. I was hoping that we could all just sing kumbaya, have the plan, framework, and move forward. But as you all know, that doesn't always work that way, but we have a good plan, and it's a framework. And we have an Affordable Housing Task Force that will look at each application that comes in, see what slot it fills in. If there needs to be an adjustment to the framework, she will come back to this board with those suggestions. This is a suggested framework. And I, I did pull some statistics. I do sit on the Career Source Board about the fastest-growing jobs in the next five years here in Tampa, Tampa Bay. And almost all of these jobs fall, would, well, they would not qualify because their incomes fall between the fifty percent and a hundred percent of the AMI. So that is really important. And these, this is the list. I mean, this is registered nurses, financial analysts, computer specialists, you know, respiratory therapists, a lot of medical people, cost estimators, civil engineering technicians. You know, these are starting jobs that people have, opticians, billing and posting clerk, insurance claims. I mean, there's just so many. Coaches, coaches of our sports teams fall in here. So I think, let us move forward with the framework. Don't feel like there's any loss today. Nobody's losing. I can't support the amendment because I think the framework is good and that it is just that, and it will give us what we need to start the work we can to help people that are, I mean, even at a hundred percent of AMI, that's still low. And so let us just get to work, and if there are changes that need to be made, we will make them, because we know we will have the need and we will have the information in front of us. So thank you all for coming out today. It's always great to see all the faces and your, your love and passion for people with low incomes is certainly noted and remembered by all of us. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan to the amendment.
Mike, is it safe to say that you do not agree or you would, you oppose the, the amendment on the floor?
I think, I would echo what both Commissioner Murman and Commissioner Overman have said. I mean, we've worked really hard to try and provide for a multitude of needs. I mean, it isn't just one particular area that, that we can focus this on. Multifamily is a lot more expensive than the math that was proposed here. So the seventeen, whatever it was, seventeen thousand dollars per unit based on this allocation is just a sliver of what it costs to deliver a multifamily unit. It's more on the order of what, what is it?
Come to the mic.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to deliver multifamily units. So the, the problem is that, and this really goes to what Commissioner Overman is saying in terms of flexibility. The, the struggle to deliver multifamily housing is one that is compounded by what the federal government has done in, in limiting the amount of nine percent tax credits. It's also a function of the loss of Sadowski Funds. And so while it appears on the surface that we're getting more bang for the buck, it's, it's much more difficult to put a multifamily deal together because there's so many different pieces that have to happen. We would like to have more multifamily, but we don't want to, if that continues to be a struggle, we don't want to have all the money pigeonholed and not be able to use it where we can have more flexibility. I think that's really the point, and we're not trying to shortchange or, or at all disadvantage, but we, we really need flexibility in this market. It's changing. The innovative area, we're only allocating a million dollars, is really where most of the action is. The Urban Land Institute held their big annual Florida Trends Conference last week, and most of the discussion was about innovative ways to deliver housing at a lower cost. That's really where we're going to get more bang for the buck, because it isn't just about rents, it's about wages, which we have trouble as a local body trying to fix. I mean, that's a, that's a big one. But I think if we can stay with what's been proposed, it's gone through a lot of vetting, I think it does give us flexibility, and so I would just encourage you to go with what's being recommended.
Well, based on that, and I also really respect Commissioner Overman's comments and position as Chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, so I'm going to, I'm going to oppose the amendment and support the original motion.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize for the amendment.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that under the amendment, we still keep that categories of single-family housing untouched, housing preservation untouched, special needs untouched. Those are all there. The two categories within the amendment that Commissioner Smith has put forward are the PERS and infill, which I don't really even know how that's described, and the innovative housing, which has no projected leverage investments attached to it. And again, the difference is, we're in a critical housing shortage. If we were to put those, that three million dollars and add it to the, what the county has already put here in terms of projected costs and needs, we could go from three hundred and ninety-two units for this ten million dollars to five hundred and twelve units for this ten million dollars. And if, given the choice, I'm going to go And if given the choice, I'm going to go for 512. So that's why I'm supporting the amendment.
Before I call on Commissioner Smith to close.
Quick clarification.
No, no, I'm calling you to close.
Yes, sir.
You have all the time, I just want to say something. All right. You know, Hope started this march toward affordable housing, I don't remember when, six years ago? Okay. And it wasn't a pretty thing. They came in with their daggers and we had armor on. And we ducked and darched and screamed and hollered at each other until we started mellowing out and started talking about how we can get this done. And we came to the conclusion that we needed to have $10 million in, in the affordable housing. And we worked on it, we got it compromised, and we passed it and named it the Hope Act. Now, we've come a long way. And as Commissioner Merman said, we should be singing kumbaya, because we fought hard to get here. You fought hard against us, we fought hard against you, we finally compromised, we got this thing done. What you should be doing is letting our staff work with you with what they put together. And hopefully, if we get the Supreme Court to go along with us and give us more money for our transportation, or we get an uptick in a revenue estimate, he may come back and probably ask for another million dollars from us. I might have just made some of our commissioners mad and staff mad, but I'm just saying that. So let's work together on this whole thing with our staff. Don't sit here and, and be upset because the mere fact is that we may not support the amendment, and we support what staff has put together. Let's work together to try to get even more money into this whole thing, if at all possible. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but let's just see what we can do. You know, the Supreme Court might change it, might do something up there and say, Hillsborough County, your tax is good, and we're, we're looking at maybe uptick in money in our revenue. Or our, our, Avalor may go up, but we still have a revenue tick up. I don't know. But just look at that, maybe another million, maybe 2 million. Don't get your hopes up, I'm just saying that. So I'm not going to support the amendment at this time, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Smith to close.
Okay. If Amanda would put that up one more time, I just want to clarify, because the figures were called into question, the figures that I was referring to was our money. So, so while our money for multifamily is 3.5 million, that's include, in order to get the 249 units, we need to get the leverage that we can from other funds. And that's what adds up to the higher numbers that the administrator was, was looking at. But our money out of our $10 million is 14,000 a unit for the multifamily. And going down to innovative housing, that's more like 77,000 a unit that we have, would have to spend out of our money. We are also counting in the second to last column there to get the matching funds and, leveraged investments that would add up to, of course, more money to build those units. But if you go down to the bottom, 392 units total, that would be increased if we could buy cheaper units. But I can count, and I can see that this motion is not going to, or amendment is not going to pass, so I would like to withdraw that and make another amendment. I'm just going to try one more thing.
Your amendment's withdrawn.
Yes, sir. Keeping this chart up there, looking at the bottom of the page, I had previously made a motion, the last time we discussed this, to increase the percentage of funds for the lowest income bracket to give, as Hope is suggesting, 50% of the funds for 50% AMI. But that motion failed. And I know that Ahab, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, tried to suggest also another way of moving more of the funds into that low-income bracket too, but that did not get support here. So I'd like to just make one more try with a compromise that has not been suggested yet. And that is that we keep the 10% funding for the top income level that I know you're very concerned about, and we give 10% more funding to the lowest income level, the 50% AMI, to bring that up to 40%. I'd like, you know, so we might find a compromise here if we, I'm talking about leaving the low income at 55.5 and taking 10 million of that into the very low income, the 50% AMI that Hope is so passionately advocating for, and make that 40%. So we would have, instead of 3 million, 4 million for that 50% AMI. And we would leave the 1 million for the top bracket moderate income. And I think we might be able to, by the way, I am not unhappy or angry or not singing kumbaya here today. This is a huge, huge victory that we are all here today just trying to find a way to make, if, if there's any way to make it any better. And so I, I, I think the 10 million's a great commitment from our county, and it's actually a small amount considering the great need. We've got 93,640 households are under that 50% AMI and, and cost burdened at the same time. So I think we need to maximize the amount of units we can put aside for our citizens who need the most help. And it's the one where people were all talking about, the workers, the janitors, the teachers' aides, the nurses' aides, the custodians, and the retail workers. And I just, I just would like to see if we can run that up the flagpole and find a compromise to, to just make it that much better today.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, I think that you run through your numbers again and clarify because it was a little muddy there when you were talking.
Yes, sir. So looking at that bottom chart, the very low income is 50% AMI. Instead of $3 million, make that 4 million by moving a million up from the low income. So, so the low income, 80% AMI, would have 45.5%. The very low income would have 40%. And the moderate income, 100%, would stay the same at 10%. And we would just get a little bit closer to kumbaya bill.
Okay, we have an amendment by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion failed, 2 to 4. Commissioners Hagan, Miller, Merman, and Overman voted no.
Now back on the main motion by Commissioner Overman and second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no further discussion on the main motion as approval of D1, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Okay, Mr. Merrill.
Your second public hearing, D2.
Hold up until room clears. Now come.
Thank you. Catherine Benson, Assistant County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. Item D2 is a proposed ordinance that authorizes the Hillsborough County Syringe Service Program, which is a sterile needle and syringe exchange program that will operate in Hillsborough County, offering the free exchange of clean, unused needles and hypodermic syringes for used needles and syringes as a means to prevent disease transmission. County funds may not be used to operate this program. This public hearing was noticed in accordance with applicable law, and Jean Early is also here if you have any questions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We have two people that have signed to speak. First person is Ellen Snelling.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I am here to speak, I'm the Board Chair of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, and I want to speak in support of this ordinance. I, I went through the ordinance, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I'm particularly interested in and think are good. I like the fact that it's a one-on-one exchange for syringes. I think some people get the idea of a syringe program, and they think maybe of San Francisco and seeing syringes littered everywhere, and they tend to give out the syringes without the exchange. So I think that's really good. The, the thing that I'm most pleased with is that there will be onsite counseling and referrals for drug abuse prevention, education, and treatment and recovery. I just think that is the most important thing to me. I have a brother that I lost to a car fentanyl overdose three years ago, and I think anything we can do to reach a very hard-to-reach population, which is what is going to be seen, people that really don't have the trust, and they aren't getting the treatment they need, medical treatment and otherwise, because of, they lack the trust in our system. So I think this is going to be great at providing that. And also, I see it mentioned in here, and I think this is so important, mental health services, because we really have to get to the root of why people are shooting up drugs, because, you know, no one grows up thinking like, oh, you know, I would love to grow up and start shooting up drugs four times a day and be addicted to heroin. So it's something that, it's a disease, and I believe that mental health is very much a part of this. And if we can treat the mental health issues, we may be able to help get them onto the treatment that they need. And of course, the Narcan that's being provided is, is excellent. And I see that there's data collection, which is also something that I'm very interested in. And I didn't specifically see an evaluation by USF, but I know that that's been discussed, and I'm hoping that that will happen. And I think it would help the general public. I know I went to the Temple Terrace meeting last night for the City Council, and there was definitely concerns from people out in the community about syringe exchange, like they really don't understand it. And I think as transparent as possible that this can be over the next year and let people know how successful it is, I think that would be great. And finally, I'd like to mention that I, you know, our, the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, mainly, our mission is prevention. And the more that we can do as a county to prevent every child under the age of 18 from using nicotine, alcohol, or marijuana, it really will go a long way in preventing people getting to the point of addiction and using IV drugs. So I would like to see, you know, as well as, we're kind of at the deep end with this program, but I'd like to see more with the prevention end. And finally, I wanted to mention that our next Anti-Drug Alliance meeting, we're going to have, sorry, the Tampa Bay Street Medicine Team out to our, our meeting. Thank you.
Jason Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think you're letting me speak on this. I'm also here to speak in support. I'm Jason Wilson, I'm an emergency medicine doctor at Tampa General, and I serve as the Medical Director for the FOCUS Program, which is HIV and hepatitis C screening, a leakage program. I would also serve as one of the Medical Directors of this program. I serve on the Healthcare Advisory Board and the leadership of Doctor, Commissioner Merman, and just wanted to sort of talk through this just for a few minutes. When I trained, patients would come in with drug overdose, and we really had no options for those patients. We would tell them, good luck, here's a list of resources, I hope you do better. Patients died. I think we have an opportunity here today to save patients' lives. We have an opportunity, both as physician community, but also as the, as politicians, as policymakers, to save patients' lives. I also want to reiterate that right now, in terms of this gigantic opioid epidemic that's going on, we do a number of things, the emergency department, to try to help patients stay off of opioids, but also treat opioid addiction. What we're missing, though, is part of the WHO best practice strategies, which is to have a sterile, a syringe, a syringe exchange program. What's very nice about this program is I think it meets every part of the state legislature's vision, which is to have a program that is run by experts, run with the Department of Health's input, and doesn't take any taxpayer money or county commission money to run. So we will run the program as a collaboration between a number of organizations, but with the Emergency Department FOCUS Program at Tampa General, and then also the University of South Florida Internal Medicine Program and their street medicine program. So I think this meets the spirit of the law. I think it's an amazing opportunity to save lives. I appreciate all the work that Commissioner Merman has done with the Healthcare Advisory Board. This has moved through the Task Force, the Behavioral Health Task Force, and through the Healthcare Advisory Board, where it passed unanimously through that advisory board, and is now in front of you and is going through public comment. So thank you for the opportunity to do this. We will save citizens' lives here. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This closes the public hearing. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we have, I have given many comments on this issue. It's been before us now, I think this is the fourth time, so I don't want to be extremely repetitive, but I do want to say that we are experiencing one of the highest HIV rates in the county in, within the state of Florida. We have the highest opioid death rate. We are, we have to do something. This is a tool in the toolbox. It is going to save lives. And every single inch of this program that we will hopefully approve today has been scrutinized to the T, every single bit of it, both legally, medically, socially, and that is why, and I wanted it to be that way because I want to answer my concerns if we were doing the right thing. We are absolutely doing the right thing. And Ellen Snelling, I have a great deal of respect for her and the Anti-Drug Alliance, of course, Dr. Wilson, who has been with the Emergency Department at Tampa General for many, many years. And honestly, I mean, to have the support that we've had from the community in moving this forward has been really outstanding. And the Healthcare Advisory Board under Dr., you know what, I just have brain threes. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. And actually, the Behavioral Health Task Force, but Jean Early, I can't see him, he must be behind the laptop. And Jean, you've really gone beyond to cross all the Ts, dot the Is, and all the staff and the people that will be operating the mobile van, the researchers from the USF and all the medical personnel. So I don't have to tell you all the great outcomes we're going to get again, because I think you'll probably remember them from the last four times, but we are going to reduce overdose deaths, and we are going to increase the number of substance abusers that will be getting treatment, treatment, and not re-abusing. And that is what is going to go a long way in the community. So I will move approval of this D2, of this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 5 to 1. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Commissioner Merman, Overman, you recognize.
This is a big program.
Chair, I asked that we waive the rules and take up item F2, the USF presentation. Our professors have classes to teach, and so if possible, we can move that ahead of E1 and F1.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to waive the rules to take up F2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. I know. Yeah, we, we got it.
Would be okay with that?
It's on the screen.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Okay, good. First off, I want to thank, I'd like to introduce University of South Florida's Dr. Bilaji Padaman. I'm going to screw it up, I'm sorry. I just, every time I try to say it, it just does not come out the way it's supposed to. And ask him to come forward to do the presentation today. Recently, there was a presentation in a variety of different community forums regarding our 2020 regional competitiveness, competitiveness report. Inside that report was some great data, and while the data Inside that report was some great data, and while the data we are going to see today is, it surrounds our entire region, with more time, I'm sure we'll be able to get more drilled down into what's going on in Hillsborough County, but the message isn't lost. And so I look forward to hearing your presentation on, that's a part of the Tampa Bay Partnership's State of the Region Report. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. And so this is part of an initiative with the Tampa Bay Partnership and USF. For the third year, we have done an economic benchmarking analysis of our region, right? Broadly looking at the eight-county region that represents us, and compared it with 20, with 19 other MSAs throughout the U.S. And so what we did in this particular year, our focus was on inclusive economic growth, not just economic growth, and so we looked specifically at issues like poverty, income inequality, and, you know, where do we stand as a region, and also what can we do about it, right? So I'll go through these very quickly. You know, some of these are, you know, the Y-axis is poverty in the, poverty rate, and we're looking at United States and Tampa Bay region, the eight-county region, so it's a, you know, fairly, you see an obvious picture here. The recession was bad. We all, you know, did poorly. Coming out of the recession, poverty rates look really low, and we are hearing that story. Now, what we also did here is, you know, created a small race in the last 10 years between our region and 19 other MSAs. Now, bottom is bad, top is good, and if you let this play out in 10 years, you see a lot of shuffling, right? So while poverty rates are low for us, if you look at where we stand now with respect to the 20 MSAs, we are in the bottom five, right? So which means that we could possibly do better, but poverty rate is not the only issue. That's important, right? Because as many of you know, those, the income connected to how poverty rates are defined are fairly low and often insufficient for a family to live, you know, in a reasonable way. So some of the other measures we looked at are the income inequality, as measured by the Gini Index. So the Y-axis, the higher it is, the more income inequality there is. And if you look at what happened in the last 10 years or so, the U.S., as well as our region, for the most part, have been seeing rising income inequality. Now, this is not the case just for us. Almost every other MSA we looked at in the analysis also is showing rising income inequality. Now, if we did the same thing, you know, where do we stand with respect to the other MSAs? And we did find, you know, a few interesting examples. You'll see Minneapolis on the far right as a good case in point, maybe, as a comparison MSA that's done really well, both in terms of poverty rate as well as income inequality. And there are very specific things that they did that we can possibly look at and learn from. The last thing we looked at was social mobility or economic mobility, and this is the, this sort of represents the American dream. This is not our data. This is data from a fantastic project called the Opportunity Atlas by a team from Harvard led by Dr. Raj Chetty, and they've been doing this work for a really long time. So this picture shows you a snapshot of 20 million Americans who grew up in the 80s, who are now in their late 30s now, maybe 40, and it shows you the probability or chances that they can make it into the top 20% in terms of income if they were born in a low-income household, right? So the darker blue colors show much, much higher rates where that's likely, and the red colors signify areas where this is not good, right? So what this shows is a very stark picture that, at least for those who grew up in the 80s and 90s, if you look at what they're learning today, the southeast did not do that well, right? And this is what social mobility, this is one of the charts that represents social mobility. So the challenge for all of us is, you know, looking forward 20 years from now, do we want the picture to look this way? And I think most of us agree that that's not acceptable, right? So if we zoom into Florida itself, I think we saw a little difference between the counties in our region as far as that data shows, but not too much. If you look, the colors are very similar. So as a state, we have our work cut out. Now, in addition to looking at traditional indicators, we also looked at Google search trends to benchmark our region. In the interest of time, I'll just be very quick here because our results mostly were consistent with what I showed earlier. And in terms of benchmarking, in the last 10 years, and this is looking at what people search for to see whether we can benchmark MSAs in terms of income inequality and so on, and we are somewhere in the middle. We looked at 2019, where the high-paying jobs are, and here we looked at LinkedIn and indeed, job portal sites that publish jobs and salary figures and so on. And by and large, what we saw, at least in the last year, are places like Denver, Nashville, Portland, and Seattle having a lot more high-paying jobs per million households than we did. And again, the purpose of this analysis is to then look at some of those other MSAs and try and see, you know, are there things that they're doing that we could be doing to bring in more high-paying jobs? A quick snapshot of jobs in 2019 in our area, on mainly professional jobs, we saw finance and IT as two big areas. Now, IT itself could also include health IT, so health is also a big part, but this signifies that these might be areas where we are already good at, and therefore could be areas that we can invest in to create more high-paying jobs in our region. Now, the last part of an analysis was looking at all the factors to tease out the why, right? What factors drive the growth that we're looking at? I'm going to turn it to my colleague, Dr. Shivendu, to quickly take you through that portion.
Thank you very much, Dr. Padmanabhan, and thank you very much, Commissioners, for giving us this great opportunity to present our research. One of the core objectives of our effort, which is, this was the third year of our effort in partnership with the Tampa Bay Partnership, is to not only identify what these factors are and how we are doing in those factors, but also come up with some sort of a data-driven understanding of what drives what. That means, at the end of the day, what kind of policy interventions might change where we are compared to other MSAs. As Dr. Padmanabhan just presented, that in terms of all the three parameters, or all the three dimensions of inclusive economic growth, which are poverty rates, income inequality, and economic mobility, Tampa Bay region compared to other comparable 2019 MSAs is not doing very well. Our performance is mixed. So we looked at what are the factors which drive these three economic outcome variables, and we found that before we go into figuring out exactly through our econometric models what needs, what are the drivers in more statistical sense, if we look at this chart, then we can see that the importance of transit availability in poverty rates. Wherever you can see that Tampa Bay has unfortunately remained in the, in what we can call the bad corner, which has high poverty rates and at the same time, low transit availability. While others, MSAs, Minneapolis again is a good example, that over the years, it has moved up in the transit availability and has also moved down on the poverty rate. That means that, just by eyeballing the data, one can see that there is some strong relationship between these two variables. Now, through the economic, econometric analysis, we found that for poverty rate, the transit availability is the most important factor that influences poverty rate. If the transit availability improves, the poverty rates go down. Other factors which also play an important role are mean household income, lowest quantile, mean house value per square feet. We were sitting behind when the first presentations were going on, and we can clearly link that to affordable housing, that that has a very significant impact on what poverty rates will be there in a particular region. Now, if we look at income inequality, again, we find that transit availability is a very important factor. If the transit availability goes up, the income inequality goes down. And again, it's not very hard to figure out why that might be happening. Because with the transit availability, lack of transit availability hurts the poor segments of the population lot more than the relatively better-off segments of the population. And the reason is, again, very simple to see, because the transit availability makes the, that access to jobs, access to education, access to healthcare, much affordable for the poorer sections of the population than the relatively doing better-off sections of the population. And now, most importantly, if we look at the economic mobility, as Dr. Padmanabhan pointed out, that that is the American dream. Can a poor person born to, can a child born to a poor household, in fact, has the opportunity to rise to become a better income household in future? And again, we find that on economic mobility, if there is one factor that is most important, that is transit availability. In whichever MSA's the transit availability has improved, in those MSAs, the economic mobility has also improved. Now, putting some numbers behind these things is that if, this is just, since we have done the analysis, so we have some numbers, but the sense is the same, that if the transit availability improves, the poverty rates go down. If transit availability improves, the income inequality goes down, and if transit availability improves, the economic mobility goes up. Now, after this, we did some policy experiments. We have done a lot of work, but due to lack of time, I'll just focus on one particular aspect of that. And we found that if the Tampa Bay region, and as Commissioner pointed out, that this is limited to, I mean, this analysis is for the whole Tampa Bay region, and if we do need to, we have, we didn't have time to do it only for the Hillsborough County, but we have data to do it for Hillsborough County, and we will be doing that going forward. But if we just look at the Tampa Bay region, in which Hillsborough County is a very major part, we find that if the policy initiative is taken of increasing the transit availability, then what will be its impact on poverty rate? And we, we see that it has, I think it has moved, let me back up here. Yeah. So if we, we can see that Tampa Bay region will become, will go up and come to the kind of a better-off corner of this chart if we make that investment in transit availability. Similarly, if we look at the income inequality, we can see that if this investment is made, then Tampa Bay region will improve in income inequality also in significant way compared to the MSAs. And so this is, in the end, if we want to predict the future, what will happen in 2021, 2022, in terms of our position, the best way is to take the policy initiatives right now, make the investment in those things which will move the needle in terms of inclusive growth of Tampa Bay region and Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you very much for your report. I've been saying this from my gut for many years, and it's really nice to see that the data proves me not to be believing my own story. So I really do appreciate the work that you've done. It is a very, very informative presentation and brings to us the information that I think is important to us as we go through our series of workshops, as we look at our policy and where we invest. I think it's important that we hear how critically important transit is as a part of our overall economics, but also to address our community in an inclusive way. And I think that's most, one of the most eye-opening parts of your presentation. I felt the data was solid and that the board's discussion of the things that we're talking about will be helpful in our meetings as well as our land use workshops. And no better day than today, as the Supreme Court heard oral arguments this morning, is it to help us understand how critically important it is to have resources to invest in our transit tools. I'd like to highlight a few points that you've made in your presentation. Transit availability is the primary driver for three variables indicating inclusive economic growth, that which we measure in our poverty rate, our income inequality, and our economic mobility. Higher transit availability leads to lower poverty rates and decreases income inequality and helps our citizens do the American dream and move from one economic strata to another. The policy experiments confirms the public transit infrastructure plays a crucial role in our economic growth of our region by providing the impoverished strata of our society easy and affordable access to education, work, and health, which you brought out in the report. Key takeaways: Economic metrics analysis concludes that public transit infrastructure availability and STEM education, so we don't want to leave that out, are key drivers for inclusive economic growth of our region. So with that said, I'd like to ask staff to continue working with the Partnership and USF researchers to include their findings in our upcoming land use workshops. And I'd also like to direct the County Attorney's Office to come back to us on February 19th, regular board meeting, to update the board on today's oral arguments before the Supreme Court regarding the one-cent surtax, so that we can have an understanding of what the impact will be, or at least have a better understanding of the arguments that were made since transit is such a critical part of our success going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I've seen this report now for a couple of years now. It's very informative and very good to get some perspective with metrics. But one thing I would really like to see is it directed, I'd like to see if there's a breakdown of, may I ask, is there a breakdown of Hillsborough County specifically? I imagine that you must study it county by county and have to combine those to create it.
So we have, we have the data for Hillsborough County, because our data, public sources of data and Hillsborough County data for most of the variables is available, but since for that effort that we have put that into our conference was at the MSA level, so we, the analysis that we have done is not at the moment at the Hillsborough County level. But we are, as I mentioned, we are working on it, and we will be able to break it down to Hillsborough County level and do the whole analysis at the county level, not at the MSA level.
Because I think that would be far more valuable for us in policy at Hillsborough County. When I've looked at the region, we're extremely different from all of our surrounding counties in so many ways, age, income diversity. I know that the mobility, and I mean mobility going from poverty and rising, is way different and far better in Pinellas County than in Hillsborough County, and as well, I believe, transit access. So I think it'd be very valuable to see Hillsborough County, since that's where we can make our policy choices and decisions, to have that broken out, I think would be extremely valuable.
Sure. We have started, and I think we should be able to finish that whole analysis in next two months' time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, just very quickly, I do want to thank Commissioner Overman for bringing this to us, and to thank Doctors Padmanabhan and Shivendu very much for coming here, taking time out of your day to share this data with us, and the Tampa Bay Partnership and the Mumma College of Business. I have, this is a really great asset for us to have this data. We can all have our gut instincts, but as you say, the, you know, the data is really important for making policy decisions. I met with Rick Comans from the Tampa Bay Partnership to discuss their piece of this and this studies, and talk with other community leaders. You were really making a
You are really making a splash with this data, and it's informing a lot of good discussion. So I would be much more interested in seeing a focus on Hillsborough County, too. But I think the key takeaway that transit is key to an inclusive economy and reducing income disparity and moving our economy forward and really standing out among our peers is the key. I really liked Rick Comans' quote in the newspaper, you know, "We're not bad in a lot of respects," but he said, "We either want to be exceptional or we want to be average." And if we want to be exceptional, we need to pay attention to these numbers because they compare us to the peer communities that have set the bar a little higher in some cases, and those, that's our competition. So it's really important to know where everybody is, but especially, you know, where we are. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank Dr., I hope that's right, Padmanabu and Dr. Shivindu. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for your great research at the greatest university in the world, the University of South Florida. Thank you very much. Mr. Merle.
We can go back now to pick up our 1015 times, no, I'm sorry, yes, 1015 times certain.
Commissioner Merle.
Thank you very much. This is pretty straightforward. As you know, we had public comment earlier from the Anti-Drug Alliance supporting Senate Bill 810. This would be a resolution that would support the passage of that bill, which does revise the age limits for the purchase, sale, and possession of tobacco products to persons under 21 years of age and conforms the state law to the federal law, which President Trump did sign into law in December, and to add this resolution to our legislative agenda in Tallahassee, and that's my motion.
My motion by Commissioner Merle, second by Commissioner Oberman, to approve item F1. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
And now I have the second part.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Commissioner Merle, you're recognized.
Yes, and then the second part is to direct the county attorney to bring back to the board for consideration an ordinance in reference to purchase, sale, and possession of tobacco products to persons under 21 years of age in the event the legislative bill does not pass this session.
As a motion by Commissioner Merle, second by Commissioner Oberman, seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Ms. Merle.
Takes you to your 1030 times certain E1, which is a special appearance by Martine Collier, Executive Director of the Arts Council.
Good morning, Ms., no, good morning, Ms. Collier.
Good morning. Thank you all for the opportunity to share with you today the accomplishments of the Arts Council during the first three months. Whoops. This is not my presentation.
Second.
Okay.
I thought I pulled up E1. This is what we have for E1, so I got to call upstairs.
Pardon me?
This is the presentation we have labeled E1, and that's what it is, so I need to make a call upstairs, unless it's one of these other two.
So this is G1.
Well, we have a wonderful presentation, but since we're having some technical difficulties, why don't I just, in the essence of time, go ahead and give you my oral presentation, and you'll just have to create the pictures in your mind.
Looks like that.
So anyway, as I was saying, I appreciate the opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of the Arts Council during the first three months of the fiscal year. During this time, we have been very, very focused on achieving the remaining outcomes of our 2017 strategic plan while concurrently working to launch a new strategic plan by July of 2020. Bringing more community attention to issues of cultural diversity was a key objective of the Arts Council's 2017 strategic plan. In October of 2019, we began planning Ideas in Action, a series to bring national thought leaders in the areas of community engagement, inclusion, diversity, equity, and access to provide training and inspiration for Hillsborough County arts leaders and advocates. Our first series will be February 19th and 20th. We have Doug Borwick, an award-winning author, and Osubi Craig, an expert in diversity from the University of Florida, coming. There will be an evening presentation and then a workshop the next day at the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center. And I'm very excited, the workshop is completely booked. This is all free, but we have 60 people lined up to spend two and a half hours discussing this, so we're excited about this. And this is the book that Doug Borwick wrote in 2012, who's one of our speakers. This book changed the way a lot of communities handle their arts and culture. It was very pivotal. The mayor, Mayor Kasser, is actually using this book in her Arts in the Block thing. And one quote from the back, "Communities do not exist to serve the arts. The arts serve, exist to serve communities." So this is kind of his thesis. I know that February 19th is board meeting day for all of you, but we will be doing a meet and greet up on the 26th floor for any commissioners and for our board members and for any city councilman that would like to come and meet Mr. Borwick before his presentation that night. So we're going to start at 3:30. If your meeting runs late, don't worry, we'll be there till 5:00. And we're actually going to have things to eat, too, so if you're, yeah, so no reason not to come. I want to update you a little bit on where we are with our grant making at this point, three months into the year. In October, we delivered grant contracts in the amount of $136,175 for the Community Arts Impact Program for 2020. Projects funded by this grant must take place between October 1st, 2019, and June 1st, 2020. So this is our newer grant program that is a nice companion to the Cultural Development Grant, but this is open to any nonprofits, not just cultural organizations, again, trying to be more inclusive in our grant making. We also, during the fall, we were publicizing and holding our individual professional grant for artists, was, the applications were up. The panel meeting was held in November, and as of December, we had given grant contracts for $30,000 in grants to artists for 2020. One of the slides you're not going to see are some of the thank you notes that we've received from these grants, because I wanted you all to understand how truly grateful these individual artists and organizations are. One of the notes was from the Florida Institute for Community Studies, who received a Community Arts Impact Grant to fund five field trips for transportation disadvantaged families, there we go with transportation again, in South County and around the county. In this newsletter post, they specifically thanked the Arts Council and asked their supporters to write notes to the Board of County Commissioners. So recognizing the need to develop a new strategic plan by July 2020, the Arts Council jumped right into the process, beginning at the start of the new fiscal year. In October, we initiated a community needs assessment envisioning process that took place from October through December. This assessment included interviews with arts leaders, community focus groups, and a community survey. And we will be having a facilitated board retreat on Saturday, February 22nd, to review all of this data and to really hit the ground running on this strategic plan. So during the first three months of the current fiscal year, we have been actively collaborating and connecting with the City of Tampa. We have a grant with the City of Tampa this year with county-affiliated organizations such as the Visit Tampa Bay, the Children's Board, and the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center. We are actively providing technical support to cultural organizations, and we presented two conference sessions at the Global CEO Conference for Arts Entrepreneurs that was held in Tampa in November, and have served on a panel for local nonprofits, sharing best practices in developing successful grant proposals. Very exciting. You may remember, I know you all have a copy of this year's Guide to Arts and Culture that comes out right as the fiscal year is starting. This is our third issue. I don't know why it happened this year, because we tried other, but the airport is loving this. They have already gone through 1,500 since the beginning of the fiscal year, and the Glacier Children's Museum is using quite a few as well. So it's still continuing to get new fans. So basically, I want to thank you all. We so appreciate the county commission's interest in our work. None of this would be possible without the support of the county to the Arts Council. We're very grateful to all of you for your personal interest. Each of you demonstrate in the artists and cultural organizations of the community as well as funding. And I did want to mention, this is an anniversary year. 30 years ago, in 1990, is when the Arts Council came under the auspices of county, of the county government. And in this time, I crunched some numbers, the county has provided $27 million during this 30-year period to help support the cultural vitality of this community, and thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Martine, thank you very much for your presentation. And then 30 years ago, Commissioner Hagan was probably still here. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Martine, for this presentation. I'm sorry the slides weren't up. The first slide is, does talk about Mr. Borwick, so maybe if you all have those in your backup. But there was something I wanted to correct, the reception that you talked about after our meeting, that slide says it's February 15th, but it's really February 19th.
It's 19th, the day of your meeting.
So that's our next meeting. And let me just say that I read that book while I was on the Christmas break, and it's really worth your time, because it really speaks to creating communities, not audiences, what you can do with art that involves communities, speaks to communities, and lifts everyone up, that everyone can participate in, and getting it out of the museums and into the community, really kind of what my vision is for arts in our county, to really get everyone. So I'm thrilled that Mr. Borwick is coming here and that we have a chance to meet him and eat something after our meeting, when some of us are often hungry. And I would also just like to mention, I'm very optimistic about the direction that our Arts Council is going with the new board members that this body has recently appointed. Also, the City of Tampa has appointed Councilman John Dingfelder, and they've also, as you mentioned, they're putting some skin in the game with some funding also, so it's, I'm excited about this collaboration with the whole community involved in moving us forward. And your leadership, Martine, has really brought that all together, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do have a copy of the book for everyone. If I haven't met with you yet this year, I'll be either bringing it by or giving it to your aides, so that everyone can have a copy. Thank you all so much.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just also, Martine, wanted to thank you for doing an incredible job, a great presentation without visuals.
The visuals were great.
You know, I mean, so thank you so much, and I really love the whole engagement, the, you know, national thinkers coming here and sharing and having a forum like that, and thank you for the invitation. I'll try my best to be up there and not just for the food, but, but thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, I think, for your leadership on the Arts Council, and this is really wonderful.
Great. Thank you all.
Commissioner Merle, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Martine, well, Commissioner Chris, if y'all remember, he was, yeah, I know who, he was the arts guy on our board for a while, but, you know, you've really, when you came on board, you worked, you've worked very hard to put us on the map, and that's why I'm hoping, is that we're really known for arts and culture here in Hillsborough County, not just for events, but like for art tours and, you know, the things that really make communities very special. All the other major cities have such great arts and culture communities, and I'm just looking forward to the future, because I think there are really great things to come from you and the board, and Commissioner Smith, I know is going to be a great advocate for you.
Thank you.
Let me say this, you came to see me, I think it was January 28th, if I'm not mistaken, you and I had a conversation.
I think so.
Yeah. And we talked about it, exhibit over in the museum, the Haitian flags, which, if you all haven't been over there to see that, you got to go.
And it's still up.
It's still up. It was kept very quiet. I think the message has gotten out now that they're there. But these flags that they were made in Haiti, and you think of Haiti as a country that's beyond, lower than third world, to tell you the truth. Those flags are, I mean, they're absolutely gorgeous. I have some on my phone. I wish I could go over to Elmore Shore, but I don't want to waste time doing that. But thank you for going over there and talking to those folks and hopefully giving a message out that they need to come, people need to come by and see that.
Thank you for cluing us in, so we didn't miss it.
Quite welcome, quite welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Mr. Merle.
Takes you to 1045 times certain B1.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B1, we're recommending approval of an initial assessment resolution to create impact fee assessment unit 20101, and also set a public hearing for March 4th, 2020, to consider approval of a final resolution. As you're aware, the assessment program allows property owners to pay the remainder of their water and wastewater impact fees over a 20-year period of time. And one of the benefits to the property owners for this program is that it reduces the upfront out-of-pocket costs for their project. Over the last year, we've had several discussions about this program with this board and whether the program should continue into the future. I think in order to help you have all the information available to you, that you need to be able to make a good decision, I want to make a brief overview and history of the program. We also have our financial advisor, Wendell Gartner, with us, as well as our rate consultant, Rob Ori with Raftellus, to give some additional information relative to the financial aspects of the program, the assessment program, and the practice of assessments across other municipalities. Let's see, just a couple of quick slides. So a little background, this program has been with us for about the last 20 years. It was started in 1996, and again, it's a payment option for development, and not just residential development. This program extends to non-residential construction as well. So in fact, on this particular assessment unit, we have a Montessori school, we have a couple of convenience, convenience stores, we have an auto repair operation, a small plaza, and we even have a biosolids processing operation that's in East Hillsborough County. So they're taking an existing operation, and their current practice is to take their wastewater, treat it, put it on a spray field, we're going to have them connect into our system. So we think it's a very good option for them to follow. So the program is voluntary. When we have a customer applying for service, we give them several options. You can pay your impact fees upfront, you can pay it through an assessment process over a 20-year period of time, or in some cases, we'll allow installment payments on a shorter time period, and those end up being payments on a monthly basis in your bill. So we offer several opportunities for the customer, and we do this really to be customer-friendly. We want to partner with our customers, make sure that we're matching costs with their ability to pay. The program on the board, the program, certainly the purpose of impact fees are to recover the capital costs of construction of new facilities, and that's the concrete and steel component of the construction costs. Certainly, we'd like to see the new development coming. Certainly, we'd like to see the new development coming in, whether it's residential or non-residential, paying for that growth. And certainly, once you've paid your impact fees, it reserves that component of capacity in the treatment plant for you to have available when your project is complete. The impact fee assessment program itself, I mentioned it was started in 1996. It can be paid up to 240 months, which is 20 years. There's no prohibition against any early payoff. And in fact, we see from time to time homeowners paying that off earlier. Sometimes it's a condition of sale. Homeowners getting ready to sell the house, a new buyer comes in, they do a title search, they see that there's an assessment on the property, and they negotiate an early payment. So that certainly happens. We see upwards of 60 to 80 assessments on single-family residents paid off annually through that resale process. It's pretty popular. So I think if you can imagine yourself paying out-of-pocket the full amount, so our total impact fees are about $3,500 for water and for wastewater both. If you had the option of a smaller payment, incremental payment, a lot of people choose that. Eighty-five percent of all of our new customers elect a time payment. And another important feature of the program is that the impact fee rides with the property. It is a part of the property. It's a benefit to the property. So if you buy a home, if you have a business, if you sell the business, if you move out, you walk away from the balance, the next owner picks that up. So it does ride with the property. And with that, I'm going to ask that Wendell Gartner come up and talk a little bit about the financial worthiness of the program.
Wendell Gartner, Public Resource Advisory Group. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and kind of talk through the structure, really from the bond side perspective and the impact that the program could have on the county. As George had mentioned, it's been around for almost 25 years. It's financially well-structured. It has not been an issue in any of the utilities or the county's discussions with the rating agencies. It has not been a credit concern at all. And part of that is because it's really well-structured financially. It does what it's supposed to do. It takes a cost and spreads it out to the residents over the useful life. And it also helps the county by taking something that an impact fee is very cyclical and provides some stability to that for budgeting purposes. The structure that the program uses is well-established in the bond market. It has a couple of features that are important to the creditworthiness. First, it uses a diversified pool. So by doing these assessment units quarterly, the county captures some diversity among the properties. It's set up to cover all the costs of the program, of the assessments, of the administration, and of the collections. And then it's got a good collection process as a non-advalorem assessment. It gives the county the ability in the future, if it decided to actually take these revenues and finance them if it needed cash upfront, the county's actually done that twice. Once in 2000, when it issued about $35 million worth of bonds, the bonds were rated investment-grade. They actually had bond insurance up to the AAA rating. And as 20-year bonds, they were actually paid off years earlier because of the prepayments and some of the additional coverages that are set into it. In 2006, the county did another bond issue of $101 million, the same high credit ratings, the same bond insurance. That $101 million issued in 2006 was refinanced with a $43 million loan in 2015, and that has just a few years left on it. Bond council is here if there's any questions on kind of the legality of assessment and assessment debt, but both of the new issues were validated by the courts as to their legality and to their structure. As I mentioned earlier, we don't see the rating agencies having any issue with this. It has not appeared to have any impact on the utilities' ratings. The utilities currently rated AAA by Moody's, AAA by Fitch, and just one notch below AAA, AA+ by S&amp;P. And similarly, on the county's ratings, you have a AAA rating from all three of the major rating agencies, one of only four counties in the state that has that. So financially, we don't see an impact on the county from the program or the structure.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Robert Orey with Raftellus. I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about the assessment program, what we also see in the state, and give you some ideas what other communities may be doing. As George mentioned, the assessment program is really a form of installment payment of the impact fees and also if any other capital or infrastructure is attached to that. He did mention shorter periods, but the assessment program used in the impact fee assessment unit is usually 20 years, and it can be paid off early. The point about the installment program is that, you know, it generally allows applicants to kind of match their cash flow to their needs. And if you think about the assets being constructed and/or the capacity being reserved, it's a long-term asset, and this kind of provides a better match and utilization as you make your payments, the assets are being utilized as a good match there. George also, I believe, mentioned, I think Wendell did as well, about the levelized cash flow, which is really good, not only for budgeting purposes, but the pledge of the impact fees, the first pledge is toward the payment of debt. And as we have a level payment, it helps us in terms of rates and whatnot from a cash flow standpoint. So that's really, really good. I think George also mentioned the improved collectibility because these assessments are on a tax bill for the county. It has the same equal lien status as property taxes. That's a very, very good feature. These installments are not charged to existing customers, they're charged to or apply to future development. Just to give you some examples, many, many utilities across Florida, and actually the country, have some form of installment-based payment of impact fees or the funding of infrastructure. There's a lot of variability in these programs. Example, you look at wastewater, water, stormwater extension programs, Martin County, Sarasota County, Lee County, Charlotte County, all have a form of installment-based payment for impact fees and capital infrastructure extension programs. You look at changes of the level of service, undergrounding of electric utilities, town of Palm Beach is looking, is doing that right now where Donald Trump lives. He's getting the benefit of that. And I think he's paying the same assessments as everybody else is too, by the way, I think. But that's happening there in the town of Palm Beach. With new development, we see a lot of communities providing benefits or installment-based benefit programs. Collier County is implementing, looking at a pilot program right now for their La Mocole Service Area on allowing new development to pay impact fees over installment payment versus upfront. Toho Water Authority has, for eligible customers, they have the right to either assess and/or bill separately the impact fees for that community. City of Lakeland, they entered into special agreements with customers for residential or developers. Their interest rates is prime plus one. Generally, they're typically five to 10 years. We have 20 years. They look, they have an ability to assess or have installment payments for new development. And of course, I mentioned last time, community development districts do a lot of this. But in addition to capital assessments, there's a lot of other types of installment payments that are out there. It could be a separate bill charged to the customer. I see a lot of, I've seen a lot of those written that way. When you do that, you usually lien the property for the total amount of the assessment, and you have a special agreement for that with the customer. Sarasota, excuse me, Summerville County actually has established MSBUs, MSBUs, excuse me, municipal service benefit units for infrastructure financing, which also includes the impact fees. They have something different there as well. But the point is, there's a lot of programs out there, a lot of installment programs. And over the years that I've worked with the county, I think as George said, this has been a very successful program, and it's met our cash needs and kept our rates low over time for a long time. With that, I'll move it over to George.
Thank you, Rob. That concludes an overview of the program itself. Item B1 is asking for approval of the initial assessment as well as setting the public hearing for March 4th.
Thank you. As a motion by Commissioner Meriman, second by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B1. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I just have a quick question. I really hate this program. I just make it clear. I made it clear, I think, the last time we talked about it. I really don't like the idea, especially when it has to do with residential properties. Commercial, I'm not so concerned. But when it comes to residential communities, adding a fee that gets paid by the homeowner transfers the risk of the development to the homeowner and away from the developer. And I'm not keen on any of those ideas, especially when we have a serious affordability problem in Hillsborough County. So is there, I don't know what the mechanism would be, but is there a possibility of modifying the program to only pertain to commercial development or versus residential, or exclude residential as a tool? Because that's my biggest issue, is when the cost is passed on to residential homes or individuals versus corporations that, you know, typically have access to more capital to invest anyway, or have easier lending opportunities than many of our individuals that are looking to purchase a home. This plays a part in their fee structure. I know we have said in the past that, yes, you know, it's all disclosed, it's part of your truth in lending disclosure, everybody gets all that information. Well, I just bought a house. The documents were like this, okay? And somewhere in there, because I didn't, I wasn't exposed to that, I might have seen this particular piece of disclosure that required me to make a payment for 20 years. But I'm not sure it's readily obvious on the first page. It says, oh, by the way, in addition to your mortgage and insurance, this is something that's not going to go away for 20 years, and could possibly put their ability to stay in that home at risk. So I was just wondering, is that something that could be done if we were to modify this program? And if so, how would it impact this particular deal?
Ms. Beck, you recognize?
Commissioner, I've just been consulting with our experts, but we do believe there's probably a way to do that. You'd have to have a rational basis, you know, articulated for why you're limiting it to the commercial properties. But, but, you know, between that, there's other, there's other things that can be explored too. But I guess the bottom line is, yes, we think there are some options in that direction.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Overman. As you know, I agree with that we should be looking at this program. I just have a question for the third gentleman. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that in the state of Florida, did you say that such impact fee assessments are being used in Martin, Lee, and Charlotte Counties as well as the City of Lakeland?
Martin and, and, I'll give you the second one, Charlotte and Lee, they don't, right now, they don't have new development assessments that's for infrastructure going to existing developments. They do use the assessment process, Chapter 197, as the method for payment, and that's more for an extension program of existing service, and they add the impact fees on top of that. And also for those, if there's vacant properties within this area, they're extending service, obviously, they would be charged as well.
Okay, so in terms of this, as we do it here, what, where in the state of Florida is there any county that does similar to our program here?
I would say-
For water and wastewater?
I would say the City of Lakeland is doing it. Collier County is looking at a pilot program to do it. In fact, when I talked to them about it, they really liked your program a lot, to be honest with you. Those are the counties I know do exactly that type of development. Toho Water Authority for certain eligible customers also does the assessment. That's Osceola County, for example. Osceola County doesn't, I don't think, has a utility anymore, but it's certain eligible customers, not all customers, for Toho Water Authority. You have several, I think Northport also has an assessment program for development. They there, they have done it also, I think, through developer agreements. Sometimes there's special agreements. That's why there's so difference, it's kind of hard to say who does just the assessment because development's applied, but it may be a different type of vehicle.
From looking at this as extensively as I could-
It's hard.
I've noticed there's not apples-to-apples, but it sounds almost like what you're describing, if we do apples-to-apples, the only thing I'm hearing is maybe City of Lakeland. If you know, and you're talking about pilot program that they're considering but haven't done in Collier County, huh?
I think the pilot program isn't-
Okay. What I would like is specific information on any place that is doing this. If you could get back to me, I don't know if other commissioners are interested, I would like, you know, to get all that specific information and maybe even talk to you about it, because I, you know, and I specifically want water and wastewater. So any information that you can give me or share with me with regards to this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And most of the examples I was giving was water and wastewater, but as you know, infrastructure has a pretty wide band.
Right, right. But I'm not interested in the other. I'm just interested in water, wastewater.
I understand.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I would like to see exactly who else is doing this, but it doesn't, even if everybody was doing it, I still wouldn't like it. It's a few thousand dollars that is a little loan we're giving to each homebuyer as opposed to a regular upfront collection of impact fees from the developer. And I know there are some who argue, well, it doesn't matter, it's just going to be passed on to the homebuyer. But anybody who has bought or sold a home, including some realtors that I've talked to, will tell you that's not how homes are priced. They're not priced by how much the lumber costs, how much the shingles cost, and how much the impact fees are paying. They're priced by whatever the market will bear. And so the developer's going to pay the impact fees regardless, and then the house is going to be set regardless. But what would be passed on to the homeowner with this program is a lien against their home, which is very, we're passing risk on to each homebuyer for enabling these little loans. And in the meantime, we're passing on to the taxpayers the burden of our infrastructure, which is not getting paid upfront. We're waiting 20 years for it. And so this may be part of the reason that we've collected, well, plus the fact that our impact fees are way too low, but we have actually collected less than $200 million in water, wastewater impact fees since 2006. 14 years, we've collected less than $200 million in water, wastewater impact fees, 197 million. We're right now looking at a $450 million spend of county money for a new water treatment plant to serve South County. We really need to be collecting impact fees upfront, making developers pay their fair share as they develop, so we can pay for the infrastructure. And that's the way I see it.
Commissioner Meriman, you recognize?
Let me just say, I mean, part of the reasons that I do support this is because, number one, it's voluntary. I mean, that's got to be the single, number one, most important. I mean, it's a choice by the homeowners to, is that correct, George? Can you answer that?
So if a property owner was an individual, they've got that choice. Probably the lion's share of the applicants that come forward are by a developing interest. So as the property is getting ready to develop, the owner of the property at that time is a development company. And so they will initiate the process. So they start it, and then it's transferred to the new owner once the property is sold.
Right. So it's not, it doesn't really have anything to do with the developer, per se, but it's, they initiate the activity.
They initiate the application in order to get the ball rolling for their development and being able to connect in for service.
For the homeowners. And they do, they're presented, is presented to them as a choice, or, I'm trying to, because I, this is financially sound. I mean, this is, it doesn't affect our bond rating, and it's a convenience, actually, to the homeowner to be able to do this rather than paying the whole thing upfront.
So what happens to your specific question is, let's take the example, George, it's development company A, well, this applicant that we have before us today. So if they were to be allowed to set up this special assessment, the development company- So if they were to be allowed to set up the special assessment, the development company then initially becomes the one obligated to repay the assessment because they don't have, they haven't sold the home or the commercial property. So if, for some reason, they can't sell the homes or they can't sell the commercial property, the development company continues to be the one paying the assessments.
Right.
It's only when there is a sale of the property that then the new owner, homeowner, commercial property owner then assumes the payment, the assessment payment. So that's kind of the way it works.
So it doesn't affect our ability to be able to bond any of the dollars, right? Or to use the full amount?
Right.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I think that was, because this isn't the first time we've discussed this, I mean, it's very similar to the municipal services benefit unit that we passed. That is completely voluntary and also, and it's led by the citizens, for instance, Dana Shores, that wants to underground their utilities, and they're each paying an assessment. I just, I don't see a reason not to approve this. I understand the principle of the, I mean, of why you guys might be not in favor of this, but in reality and practicality of actually applying this, it, I don't see why we shouldn't allow a development to be able to do this. If it has worked in the past, it doesn't affect anything we do financially going forward, and it is voluntary. So other than the fact that some people just don't like it, I get that, but I just think based on facts, we've approved these before, you know, and it had been pretty much a routine approval, though we had it explained, George would come up and explain it to us. So I mean, I'm going to continue to support this. I think I'm starting to read the tea leaves here. We may be at a stalemate of three to three. And I'd really like to have a full board. If we're not going to approve this today, I'm going to probably, actually, I may do this right now, just make a motion to continue it.
You have a motion on the floor already, Mr. Commissioner Merman?
Oh, yeah, amendment. Can I do as amendment to continue?
You can do an amendment or withdraw your motion, make another motion.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve it and just make another motion to continue it for our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to continue B1. Commissioner Kemp, is there any reason for you to speak now, since we're going to have no vote on continuing, if we got to speak to the motion?
Well, I think everything's relevant to continuing it, but we have the discussion here now, I would-
Speak to the motion, Commissioner Kemp.
I am. I would like to ask Georgia another question, to be clear. Does the, every, if you're developing in Polk or Manatee or Pasco counties and you're doing water and wastewater, who pays that fee in those three counties? The developer?
Presumably.
Correct? Yeah. So I just want to be clear that it's a developer benefit here, and particularly for single-family homes, that's the case. Today on-
Commissioner Kemp, you're not speaking to the motion.
I'm speaking about whether to continue it or not, because I don't think we should continue it at this point, and I think we should understand what we're continuing. Another aspect of this is today, we do have a few properties outside the urban service area. One in particular was extremely controversial when it came before this board and I was on this board, and that's this one where many residents of this county-
Commissioner Overman, when you speak as to why you do not want to continue the motion, continue this, you're not speaking to the motion. You're speaking about the actual meat of the item. Speak to why you don't want to continue the motion.
I think it's time for us to just vote on this today, and I think we should also further make, have this discussion now, since we are partially through it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to continue item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith, vote it no.
Mr. Merman?
Your last time certain is B2, which is County Audit Report on Economic Development Local Incentives.
Audit Report number 374 was an audit of the local incentive agreement monitoring process. This is a process that is effectuated in the Economic Development Department for the county. We worked with them throughout the audit, and specifically, what we looked at for this audit was the monitoring controls and the control environment in place for the local incentive agreements, and also some specific compliance testing relative to the ad valorem exemptions historically granted. Overall, the audit team was able to conclude that their controls were at a formal control maturity level, which is the average level we assign. We did have some recommendations for management that we thought we could further enhance their monitoring controls, and they have agreed or concurred with each of those recommendations. I'm available for any questions and ask you accept the report. I'm sorry, Heidi Penner, County Audit Department.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to receive the report. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Remember, we, it's 20 minutes to one, we have three items, am I correct, Mr.?
Yes.
And then future issues. So if you don't mind, we'd rather go through the three items, and then we're done for the day. An objection? An objection, continue, Mr. Merman.
Then your next item would be G1, just County Attorney's item.
Commissioners, I can probably introduce this pretty quickly. This is in response to a prior board directive to research what options there were in terms of combining or dealing with both the public art program and the Arts Council. And so you've got a memo in the back that's very succinct, and it basically says that whatever direction this board wants to give us, we can get you there. Either it may involve amending ordinances and so forth, but there isn't any prohibition. So however you choose to ultimately go, we can find a way legally to get you there.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is an item I brought up, and thank you very much for looking at it. I would like to make a motion. I brought it up, I have for a few years actually been interested in combining these two programs. Commissioner Smith is on the Arts Council as our representative, and I have full respect for that, really don't want to step on any toes or, so what I'd like to do is make a motion to ask the county attorney and our administration to facilitate a work group that is properly noticed for Commissioner Smith and I, and of course, any other commissioners that would like to be there, to discuss the consolidation with the boards of both programs going forward, so we can converse and talk and try and get to the place where I think each one, each of us want to go. I'm more concerned in the structure, and, you know, then Commissioner Smith can, she can take it and sail off into the sunset. But I, that's my motion I'd like to make, so we can go forward.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, and thank you very much. I think this is a great idea for us to be able to have a more in-depth discussion within the sunshine, with anyone who wants to come. Perhaps Commissioner White has been expressing interest in public art projects, but anyone who wants to come is, and hopefully have the staff there who can explain, you know, kind of both programs and how, what options there might be. I've been talking to a lot of people about this kind of concept, and there might be a lot of options on that spectrum to combine the programs, but it does need a good fleshing out, and I look forward to those discussions with you. So I hope everybody will support this motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Commissioner Merman, would you make a motion to receive the report?
Yes, please. I'll make a motion to receive the report. Thank you.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith to receive the report, item G1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Merman?
G2 are the scorecards for solid waste and capital projects. Solid waste presentation will be particularly helpful when we go into G3, which is the item on solid waste recycling. So let's go ahead and begin.
Jim Hudok, Capital Programs Department. Commissioners, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and we have the wrong presentation, so let's switch that real quick. Apologize. There we go. Again, Commissioners, I really appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you today about the Capital Programs Department. We are a relatively new department, created just last summer as part of a larger reorganization here at the county. As part of that reorganization, the previous Public Works Department was split into the Capital Programs Department and the Engineering and Operations Department. We are a support department, and we provide support to over 28 different departments here at the county, including departments such as Parks and Recreation, Fire Rescue, Engineering and Operations, Library Services, and others. The primary service that the department provides is to deliver quality, cost-effective transportation, stormwater, and architectural capital improvement projects that meet the needs of the community and contribute to the building of community prosperity. In addition to our main support mission, we have a secondary mission that includes working in coordination with the Development Services Department to provide field inspection services for developer-constructed stormwater and transportation-contributed assets. The goal of this service is to ensure that developer-constructed assets are constructed safely and in compliance with all standard county regulations. And with that, with regard to the value that the Capital Programs Department provides the community relative to the county's strategic outcomes in the area of strong and sustainable local economy, we were successful in contracting over $200 million in professional and construction services contracts to engineers, architects, and construction firms in the Tampa Bay area in FY '19. We also supported the local disadvantaged minority women-owned businesses by achieving an average of 13% of total dollars spent on capital projects, which works out to about $22 million, went to DMWB firms in FY '19. We were also able to support business growth through 368 inspections of new commercial development sites. In the area of enhanced public safety, we contributed to public safety with the successful delivery of the Fire Rescue Station Harding and Falkenburg Road Jail Center Chiller Plan Edition projects, and we worked in partnership with the Development Services Department to ensure private residential development was constructed safely by conducting over 9,600 home site inspections, contributing to 7,300 residential certificate of occupancies issued to homeowners in FY '19. In the area of life enrichment recreational opportunities, we supported the expansion of public access to cultural services with the on-time, on-budget completion of the new state-of-the-art Seabight Andrews Library. We expanded recreational opportunities by repurposing the former Carrawood Wastewater Treatment Plant into the new 30-acre Carrawood Village Park. And we also provided for successful completion of seven projects that added state-of-the-art libraries, parks, and high-quality technology and community facilities, including Wi-Fi, turf fields, dog parks, splash pads, and playgrounds. One of the areas that we impact greatly is the high-quality community assets in our department. Last year, we were able to complete over 218 lane miles of road resurfacing, which is roughly, just to give you an idea, it's roughly the equivalent of twice the total lane miles of existing roadway in the Fish Hawk subdivisions. We were also able to repair a total of 16 miles of existing sidewalk, which is roughly the equivalent of the typical five-by-five sidewalk panels that you see. We did over 17,000 sidewalk panels in repair last year. We were also able to construct 2.7 miles of new sidewalk, which is roughly the equivalent length of about 40 football fields. In addition, we were able to repair and replace a total of about three miles of existing stormwater culvert, and that was over 47 separate locations. So there was a lot of work done on stormwater. And also completed repairs about 19 county-owned bridges throughout the county. Commissioners, I also like to just take briefly, share a few brief success stories with you for FY '19 for our department. In the area of transportation, we continued our commitment to new safety enhancement techniques and new design alternatives in transportation design. One great example of this was our work on the Van Dyke Road P and E study. In this study, we really focused on incorporating a multimodal approach to this proposed corridor widening that works to ensure a safe environment for all roadway users, that includes bikes, pedestrians, and vehicle users. We're very focused on this project to incorporate the use of Vision Zero principles in the proposed design, along with speed mitigation strategies to enhance safety and circulation for all users of the roadway. Another successful project in the transportation program last year was the successful completion of the final segment of the Rusby Downs Corridor, which provided for the widening of this key hurricane evacuation route in northern Hillsborough County from Beers Avenue to the Pasco County Line. And finally, our resurfacing program last year was able to successfully complete over 61 neighborhood projects and 19 major road resurfacing projects, which provides for enhanced community safety and aesthetics in these communities. In the area of architectural projects, we're very proud to partner with our support and our user departments, such as Library Services and the Parks and Recreation Department, to complete three very exciting projects last year. Again, the Seabight Andrews Library, the Countywide Soccer Sports Plex, and the Carrawood Village Park. Each of these projects will provide amazing amenities for their communities for many years to come. And finally, Commissioners, one last success story from last year was the successful development and deployment of the Hillsborough County Capital Projects Viewer. This new project information mapping tool provides key information to our residents regarding all of the capital projects currently in the county CIP. This new tool received national recognition at the 2019 National ESRI Conference and was included in a presentation of examples of models for government communicating value to the residents and enabling smart communities. So we're very proud of that. For those interested in seeing the new viewer, you can simply go to the county's overall website, hillsboroughcounty.org, and scroll down to the bottom of the page where you'll find a link to the new viewer. From our department's key sustainability and performance metrics, we have three key metrics. The first is concerning the cost of our project administration service that we provide. Currently, our indirect project administration cost is running approximately about 5% of total project cost. This is typically lower than the typical percentage that we use for these, the industry guideline of about 8 to 10%. So we'll continue to monitor this metric to ensure that we're providing a cost-effective service when it comes to capital delivery. In addition, in FY '19, the department completed expenditures on over 741 active CIP projects, resulting in $141 million in total expenditures in FY '19. We're also able to complete a construct, complete construction of about 132 projects with a combined value of $85 million in FY '19. With regard to our secondary support service in the area of developer inspections, in FY '19, our department performed approximately 31,000 developer site inspections at an average cost of about $35 per inspection. These inspections resulted in the review and acceptance of approximately $84 million of new developer-constructed transportation and stormwater assets, including 74 new lane miles of roadway and over 26 miles of new storm drains. And finally, Commissioners, to wrap up, our department is very focused on customer service and capital programs. Every day, we're focusing on providing outstanding customer service, so, and making a real difference in our communities. So we just want to provide some examples of some feedback that we've received from residents on a few of our projects over the last year. And with that, that's really all I have for you today. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you. Just a quick question, and Jim, I think you do a great job, so you really serve our community well, so I appreciate all you're doing. I do want to ask you, and we have discussed this before at the board, is how long projects might stay on the capital, the CIP list, and maybe we're not going to absolutely fund them? Do you scrub the list and look for projects that maybe are just kind of sitting there, maybe not going to happen, or they're partially funded, or something like that, so we can redirect, keep a clean list of projects, but also if resources are allocated, that they go to other projects on the list?
Yes, Commissioner, we do. We are very focused on making sure that projects that are in the program are moving, and that there's still a continual need. There is a, we work with our user departments on an annual basis- There is a, we work with our user departments on an annual basis to make sure that there's a reprioritization and make sure that the projects that are still active in the CIP are still truly needed and need to be moved forward. So if there's anything that necessarily needs to be adjusted, those adjustments are easily made on the annual basis and then brought back to the board annually with the new CIP every year. But we do, we are very focused on making sure that everything that's active is moving and getting built, because we know it makes a huge difference in the communities.
Right, great, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And you certainly cover a wide range of projects in our county. Thanks for an excellent report, kind of going from A to Z. It's just very interesting that, that this week I've talked to you about two different projects. One, a bridge project, the Second Street Bridge in Ruskin, and one, the Public Arts Program.
Is this one's done, isn't it?
No, it's not, but we're on good news today. And, but anyway, I want to thank you for your responsiveness and providing information on, on everything and, and being so available and accessible and working so hard on such a broad range of, of projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to receive the report.
Great job, Jim. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Second by Commissioner Smith to receive the report on G2. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Merrill.
Kim is going to present her scorecard and then roll right into G3, which is the solid waste recycling and diversion report. So that'll wrap up your agenda for today.
Good afternoon, Kimberly Byer, Solid Waste Division Director. Thank you for allowing us to share the solid waste scorecard with you today. At Solid Waste, we provide solid waste collections and materials management in a sustainable and financially responsible manner that enhances the lives of our customers and future generations. We do this through residential and commercial solid waste collections, through sustainable materials management, and through energy production. But solid waste doesn't stop at the curb. We provide, we, at our five community collection centers, we accept items from Hillsborough County residents that don't fit in their garbage or recycling carts. These facilities are open six days a week from 7:30 to, from 7:30 to 5:00. In addition, at our community collection centers, we accept electronics and paint from all Hillsborough County residents, including City of Tampa and Temple Terrace residents. We participate in education and outreach efforts that inform our residents how to reduce litter and waste, in addition to how to properly recycle and be good stewards of our environment. We also produce energy through waste processing that, that energy is utilized at our Public Utilities Campus off Falkenburg, and the remaining energy is sold to Tampa Electric and Seminole Electric. We provide for recycling through our curbside collection program, our community collection centers, our yardway sites, and our resource recovery facility. We also partner with code enforcement and neighborhood relations to conduct neighborhood cleanups and beautification projects. We also provide household hazardous waste collection three Saturdays a month throughout the county. This allows our residents to properly dispose of their household hazardous waste. That waste would otherwise end up in their garbage or recycling carts. On the solid waste collection, on our solid waste collection and materials management, on the collection side, we provide residential collections to about 290,000 residents throughout the county, including New Tampa, and about 30,000 commercial properties. We do that through our two transfer stations and our five community collection centers. On the materials management side, we process those materials at our waste energy facility, our Class 1 landfill, the three yardway sites, and our household hazardous waste collection centers. And as you can see on this map, that we, they're strategically located throughout the county. In FY '19, we provided over 60 million collection opportunities throughout the county, and we serviced over 400,000 customers at our, at our different solid waste facilities. We processed over a million tons, and we generated 287 megawatt hours of energy. We produced, we also generated about 109 million in revenue, and the majority of that revenue came through our solid waste assessments, our user fees, energy sales, and recycling. The value we bring to Hillsborough County includes, we contribute to strong, sustainable local economy by providing cost-effective, environmentally sustainable collection and materials management. Our solid waste assessment rates have only increased about 1.3% over seven years, despite contractual increases, labor increases, and material, capital increases. We also seek innovative material processing that equates the greatest value for our resources. We processed over a million ton, tons last year, and were able to avert 65% of that from the landfill. We also enhance public safety through our collections and materials management efforts, which reduce air, water, soil impacts by providing processing facilities for household garbage and hazardous waste. We monitor and maintain those closed landfills that were previously operated by Hillsborough County and maintained, that also includes two Superfund sites that we previously operated. Through life enrichment and recreation opportunities, we provide education and outreach efforts that inform our residents how to recycle and how to reduce recycling and litter. We produced, we provided over 2,000 education and outreach events throughout the Tampa Bay area last year. Our success story includes, starts with our cornerstone facility, our resource recovery facility, where we processed about over 500,000 tons. We generated over 286 megawatt hours of electricity. That's enough to power 26,000 homes on an annual basis. That's, that equates to more than the homes in Temple Terrace and Plant City. We eliminated, eliminated over 500,000 tons of carbon dioxide emissions by land, by incinerating that waste rather than landfilling. On the recycling side, we processed over 719,000 tons, but the majority of that came through our resource recovery facility, our curbside programs, and through our yardway sites. Our KIS State of Millionaire Matrix includes our, on our collection side, those 290,000 residents that we collect household, household garbage from, their annual cost was only 131.42 annually. That's a cost of about $11 a month. That's less than your cable bill typically, that's less than your internet bill, and that's about 63 cents per collection. So our rates have been consistent over seven years on that, on the collection side, and we offered over 60 million collection opportunities with a 99.98% success rate. On the materials management side, we serviced over 1.1 million customers at an average cost of $73 a ton, and that, that, those tons that we have handled have increased about 6%, since FY '18. 35% of those tons have gone to the landfill that will continue to increase as population increases and waste generation increases. Of those 1 million tons, about 382,000 of those tons came to our, came to our transfer facility. There, we were, transferred, put those in semi-trucks and took those to our different disposal facilities. That equates to over 22,000 semi-tractor trailers that we had on the road this year. Stretched end-to-end, that was spanned from Tampa to Miami. Thank you for your time. We're here to answer any questions you may have regarding the scorecard.
Thank you. I see no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't have questions particularly about this, but I was just curious. So our, our contract, our, the RFP that we did for waste, solid waste, was canceled or?
It was canceled. We are reviewing our other options at this point. We should have a recommendation for you in the, in the very near future.
How, how is the board notified when, because we did approve the RFP going out? How is the board notified? I, I think that's a question for Mr. Merrill, so that we would know that this occurred.
You got a memo from our procurement director.
Okay, and, okay. When was that?
I don't know. Have to look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
We just do G3 then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You get a motion to receive her report. There's a motion and a second to receive, by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Omen, to receive the report. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you. Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, now G3.
Thank you. Kim Byer, Solid Waste Division Director. We're here today to provide you a summary of our recycling and diversion work plan. In solid waste, we operate an integrated solid waste systems, a system, the cornerstone is our resource recovery facility, which is currently at capacity, and a landfill is about 3,300 acres with 15 years of permitted design capacity. In 2019, we, we processed about a million tons. The majority of that went to the waste energy facility, but as population increases, so does waste volume. The waste volume processed through the system has increased annually about 30,000 tons. A sustainable solid waste system manages tons following the waste hierarchy, seeking first to reduce and recycle, or reduce and reuse. As you can see, our primary system is concentrated at the bottom, with resource recovery and landfilling being the majority of the way we process our tons. This diversion plan that we're providing you today is focused on getting us higher up this pyramid. Based on our waste composition, about 70% of our, of our waste is actually recyclable or compostable. But best, but best-case scenario is about 40% is actually recoverable after it is processed. An example of that would be our waste energy facility, where there is some percentage that does come out as ash, and not all of it is actually processed. Some of the challenges we're seeing in the system now is our resource recovery is at capacity. We talked about that and has been there since 2014. And we do have a landfill, 15 years of capacity. It's designed and constructed for 15 years at this point, and this is our least preferred option for waste disposal. Secondly, we're having problems in our recycling area. Recycling is at an all-time market low, about a 50-year market low. There's also an oversupply of material in the domestic market right now, driving up processing costs and recycling costs. Our current contract with Waste Connections for Processing expires in 2020. There is a three-year unilateral renewal on that contract. Thirdly, our contamination continues to increase in the, in the curbside program despite our efforts, our outreach and education efforts, and this is being seen throughout the market in the United States. In order to assist with these challenges, we've contracted with Resource Recovery Systems to assist with the recycling and diversion plan. I'd like to hand it over to Michael Timpain of RS to step you through our plan.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Michael Timpain, and I'm going to take you through the steps in the plan. The first part is your recycling processing contract, and you may recall that last fall you had an adjustment in rate, but even with that adjustment in rate, you have one of the best contracts in the marketplace by a lot, and the 28/26 floor is very, very competitive. It's, it's really top of the class. This current contract has a unilateral renewal, and that renewal is for three years, and it begins on the 1st of October in 2020. It's, again, well below market, and the county and WCI is in discussion for a new term. And I guess this is the biggest priority in the whole work plan of this year. Let's see. How do I press it for? Just did the errors. Okay. Which one?
The zero.
Okay, there you go. All right. Okay, there you go, sorry. Okay, so, so what you have on the table is the, you're negotiating with Waste Connections, and really, you have limited options. There are only two processors in this market, and it's, it's a market of 4 million people, and the alternatives are 40 to 60 miles away in very high traffic. So you have a new contract that you have to get done for the renewal, and you have a very short fuse. If we're not able to successfully renew it, if the county isn't, you'll have to go out for an alternative bid between the local contractors and hope. And that leads you, leads me to the midterm. You need to have options after that renewal term. The options have to assure certain things that you can see in the slide, and it really comes down to bringing in more competition through comparing public and private options. And both, both public and private have their benefits, and you'd really like to support private businesses if they can do the job for you. But you're not going to know whether or not you're getting the best price or the best amount of services unless you can compare it against other services. And so we're hoping that we can have an RFP in the springtime that compares these two equally and without bias and come to the best solution to the county. So that's one element there. The rest of the diversion plan is, is for the future. And again, it's because you really have a problem, you're adding 30,000 tons, and they immediately get landfillled. You have no more capacity at your waste energy plant. So we're trying to work on the hierarchy items that may work for the county in the long term. This has been a long pathway. The county's done a lot of work. There's been a lot of investigation last year at the behest of the commission and the departments in the county. And what you're looking for is to offer services where none exist and prioritize the most economic, the simplest, the most practical, before you go into larger, more riskier projects. But you want to look at them all, and they, they take change. Diversion takes change. More recycling takes change, and, and that's a big issue, because convenience may suffer sometimes. So your diversion plan may end up looking like this. These are viable conservative estimates of what each one of these practices might get you. And as you can see, again, focused on the hierarchy and doing the simplest things first and attacking those streams that you can really get and not have to bring to the landfill but can reuse for the benefit of the county. In reduce and reuse strategies, most cities have adopted the best practices in the United States, and you need to work across departments. It's really a policy issue. And so this year, it's looking at the policies and best practices and coming back with a series of recommendations of how to reduce waste in the county and internally here in this, in the county offices. And both of those things, you have room to do that, looking at your waste streams. So that's, that's a very important thing to start with. It's simple. And then a request for solutions finally at the end of the year. And these will take four different areas, separated organics, separated commercial recyclables, innovative shovel-ready pilots, and long-term mixed-waste technologies. And from left to right, they're more complicated and there's more risk involved. So by looking at those separately and coming back, if any fit the profile of being a better cost for the county, or being in the best interest of the county, get the most material reused at a fair price, then we can bring them back to you. So those are the elements of the plan.
Thank you, Michael. So the request for solution result in a wide variety of possibilities. We'll vet these technologies and bring back to you any viable option that provides for diversion rate that's economical and provides for a long-term sustainability for the county. The 2020 schedule for the work plan starts immediately with a recycling processing contract and wraps up in late fall with the advertisement of the request for solutions for diversion options. Thank you for your time. We're here to answer any questions you may have regarding the work plan.
Thank you very much. A motion to receive the report by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Omen. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Great job, Kim. Thank you.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
That just leaves future discussion items, if any.
Any future discussion items? Any future discussion items? Seeing none?
Wait, wait, wait.
Don't worry about it.
I just want to make sure we've got the report coming back on the 19th regarding the certain.
Yes, we will plan on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further Fisher, any further future discussion items? Seeing none, we adjourn.